Board of Education for February 9th, 2021 is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted on the PPS website under the Board and Meeting tabs. Board and Meetings tabs. This meeting is being streamed live on PPS TV Services website and on Channel 28, and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. Welcome. And to begin tonight's board meeting, I would like to ask Director DePass to introduce this next agenda item, which is the resolution in support of Black History Month. Director DePass?
Yes, thank you Chair Lowry. Black History Month is an annual observance originating in the United States, where it's also known as African American History Month. It has received official recognition from governments in the United States, Canada, and more recently has been observed in Ireland, the Netherlands, and the United Kingdom. It began as a way of remembering the important people and events in the history of the African diaspora. Sorry, tech issues. Today in 2021, I feel it's important to pause and reflect on what this past year has meant for the African Americans in our country and in our city. I want to acknowledge that it was only nine months ago, following the killing of George Floyd, we saw our country's biggest protests for racial justice and civil rights in a generation, reigniting a national reckoning about racial injustice, giving both a local and global profile to the Black Lives Matter movement. I'm sorry. While at the same time, the health and economic impacts of systemic racism are ever more present during the COVID-19 pandemic, where nationwide, one in every 735 Black Americans for you math nerds out there, that's 13 in 10,000, has died from COVID-19. But with all this heaviness, there are some bright spots. In July, we passed a resolution in support of the development of a Center for Black Student Excellence in Portland Public Schools to support optimal teaching and learning environments and promote culturally responsive strategies, all in partnership with culturally specific, Black-led and Black-serving community-based organizations. At the last board meeting, I'm proud to share that we voted to change the name of Wilson High School to Ida B. Wells Barnett High School, after the great leader who led the Anti-Lynchings Crusade of the 1890s, and later founded several civil rights organizations, including the NAACP and the First Black Women's Suffrage Association. And last month, the latest data from the Oregon Department of Education showed that over the last three years, Black students at Portland Public Schools had a 12.3 percentage point gain in graduation rates. I see these as bright spots, as hope for a better future and better outcomes for our Black students and for all students. And as I say how proud I am of these accomplishments, I know that our work isn't done. We need to work together to close the achievement gap because reading and math outcomes should not be determined by one's race, income level, or zip code. We need to work together to reduce the expulsions of Black and Brown students who have disparate outcomes in the criminal justice system. We should work with our local community-based organizations and Black-led partners proactively and not as an afterthought. We should work together to become the district of choice for teachers and administrators of color. We've asked the superintendent to track and actively recruit and retain teachers and administrators of color, and I've been impressed that with everything else going on, including the response to the global pandemic, that the commitment to making PPS a culturally and racially diverse district and learning institution is strong. And we should recognize Black History Month every month by spending a portion of our district budget in places that benefit the Black-owned businesses and that stimulate the local economy. And I'd like to read the resolution. Resolution number 6238, proclamation and recognition of February as Black History Month. Portland Public Schools, PPS, celebrates Black excellence to reinforce the success of every student, their futures, and provide community-centered education that allows every student to achieve their fullest potential and thrive into adulthood. Black History Month began in 1915 by historian Carter Woodson and other prominent leaders as a way to formally observe the visionary contributions of Black people, and now is a time for recognizing the central role of members of the African diaspora in U.S. history. After the onset of Black History Month, half a century after the 13th Amendment abolished slavery, the civil rights movement accelerated a public awareness of Black identity. Following the killing of George Floyd, the summer of 2020, saw the United States' biggest protest for racial justice and civil rights in a generation, reigniting a national reckoning about racial injustice, and gave both a local and global profile to the Black Lives Matter movement. The contributions of members of the African diaspora and their endeavors to learn and thrive throughout history and make unforgettable marks in our nation as artists, scientists, educators, businesspeople, influential thinkers, members of faith communities, athletes, and political and government leaders, reflect the greatness of the United States. Black history reflects a determined spirit of perseverance and cultural pride in its struggle to equitably share in the opportunities and the burdens of a nation founded upon the principles of freedom and liberty for all people. Members of the African diaspora have participated in every American effort to secure, protect, and advance the cause of freedom and civil rights, and continue to resist white supremacy. The local community has enriched the diversity of perspectives and experiences within our district, and the Board of Education desires to recognize and honor the achievements and contributions of members of the African diaspora. Our history curriculum of community, state, region, nation, and the world must reflect the lived experiences of people of different racial, religious, and ethnic groups. All students need an opportunity to understand the common humanity underlying all people, to develop pride in their own identity and heritage, and to respect and accept the identity and heritage of others. In service of the superintendent's overarching strategic framework of targeted universalism, shaped from the community-driven vision for PPS, we recognize our commitment to center the realities of Black students and eliminating the oppression embedded in our systems that they experience. On July 28th, the Portland Public Schools Board of Education passed Resolution 6150 in support of the development of a Center for Black Student Experience, Excellence, rather, in Portland Public Schools, which directed the superintendent to resource and develop a clear roadmap for the design of the Center for Black Student Excellence, an initiative that focuses on a group of community schools by supporting optimal teaching and learning environments and promoting culturally responsive strategies, and to continue to partner with culturally specific Black-led and Black-serving community-based organizations to develop those plans. On January 26th, 2021, the Portland Public Schools Board of Education passed Resolution 6235 to change the name of Wilson High School to Ida B. Wells Barnett High School, after the great leader who led the Anti-Lynchings Crusade of the 1890s, and later founded several civil rights organizations, including the NAACP and the First Black Women's Suffrage Association. Through leadership and practice, Portland Public Schools has dedicated to goals that advance racial justice, especially for Black communities in the Portland metro area. Be it resolved, the Board of Education of Portland Public Schools hereby recognizes the month of February 2021 as Black History Month, and encourages all educators to commemorate this occasion with appropriate ceremonies, instructional activities, and programs. Thank you, and thank you to staff for taking a fresh look in 2020 at this resolution with me, specifically Ms. Shanice Clark. Thank you for your contributions.
Thank you, Director DePass. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6238, resolution in support of Black History Month?
So moved.
Take it.
Director Brim Edwards moves, and Director Scott seconds the adoption of Resolution 6238. Is there any board discussion?
I just really appreciate the way that resolution and proclamation was made, and that it spoke to our goals and our unfinished business and some of our successes, and it felt direct and personal, and thanks to everybody who pulled that together.
I know that PAT is holding a week of action this week as part of their efforts around Black History Month, and let's see, tomorrow, they're encouraging folks to support Black-owned businesses. On Thursday, they're having a watch party for the movie Push Out, and on Friday, they're having a Q&amp;A with the filmmakers. So find more through our Portland Association of Teachers, who are also doing a great deal to honor Black History Month. Any other board discussion?
So just reflecting back three years ago, when we started, and as many of us started on the board, and I'm just thinking about what was in that resolution, and to Director Konstant's point, just the gains that have been made and the work that's still left to be done, I think the resolution did a really great job of capturing that. And thank the staff for all the work of the last couple of years to make many of those things possible, and also the board action, and the community, because we couldn't have done most of those things, whether it was the bond or the changing of the name, without deep engagement with the community. I also wanted to raise at this time the information and resources that we provide to the schools, and Superintendent Guerrero, earlier today, you all shared in response to just a question about what sorts of resources are being supplied to the schools, not just for this month for Black History Month, but throughout the year in the curriculum. And I don't know if that's why Dr. Quayar and Dr. Byrd just appeared on the screen, but maybe they'll speak to that. I thought the resources that you shared with the board, that are being shared with the community, were really thorough and comprehensive and should be a good platform for our schools, but I'm wondering if...
Absolutely. Thank you for the question, Director Brim Edwards, and thank you, Director DePass, for reading that resolution and wonderful introduction, and for the board's consideration of this. So it's, of course, important to commemorate the month to Black History Month, and recognizing Black student brilliance is a year-round opportunity that we remain committed to. I appreciate sort of early signs that actions and indicators are showing that our commitment is beginning to bear some fruit and improved outcomes and opportunity gaps we want to narrow. But yes, placing a real emphasis that's culturally affirming and sustaining starts with what happens in the classroom, and making sure the teaching and learning really reflects the students that we serve. And so guidance to our school communities, to our school leaders, and to our educators is certainly part of something we want to, you know, continue to add attention to, in particular during this month. So we do have our chief of schools, Dr. Byrd, and our deputy superintendent for instruction, Dr. Craig Quayar, and I would love for them to elaborate a little bit, for everyone's benefit, some ways in which that guidance is being provided, and some examples of ways that our educators are really putting an emphasis this month on those types of lessons. Dr. Byrd or Dr. Quayar?
Thank you, Superintendent. Hello, School Board. I do want to echo Superintendent Guerrero's statements that this is an incredibly important time, but even more so, not something that the school system practices just one time a year, something that is at the very core of what we do each and every day for our students, for our schools, and for our communities. And I am joined here by Dr. Valentino, who is prepared to talk a little bit about, you know, the work that we're leading in the Office of Teaching and Learning, and how the work is interconnected and woven through our curriculum and our instructional practices and our pedagogy. And then also joined here with Dr. Byrd to talk a little bit about the work that the Office of School Performance is doing to continue to enhance and uplift this very important work. So we'll go ahead and start with Dr. Valentino, and then we'll close with Dr. Byrd.
Good evening. Excuse me. Board Director Lowry, directors, Superintendent Guerrero. So for us, the premise is that Black History Month should not be a 30-day experience, but it really should reflect how we, what we believe in, how we feel about how we work with our BIPOC communities, and how our white communities interact in that same environment. And so for the Office of Teaching and Learning, integrating the work of "Black History," quote-unquote, is really a function of when we're talking about language arts, when we're talking about math, when we're talking about science, that there are threads woven in throughout the lessons and the units that reflect that belief. And so while we do celebrate for one month more explicitly, it really does have to be an integrated process of ensuring that throughout the day, our students have access to that understanding, through that level of experience, through, and having to develop a belief system that really looks at celebrating the diversity and honoring voice, and acknowledging the assets that we all bring to the table. And so as you will begin to see within our curriculum, you will see more and more evidence of that work being integrated and woven through our curriculum. So that's how we hope to be able to make it more comprehensive, PK-12, because it will be available on our Atlas management system, so that the curriculum is available to all teachers and to all administrators 24/7, and that they can download and use in their instructions.
And then finally, I would just add that in OSP, obviously, it's our goal to give schools as many resources as possible for, again, not just February, but for every month. So we definitely have some schools that are great examples, have great examples of celebrating Black excellence throughout the year, Black brilliance throughout the year. So we've provided, in our Office of School Performance meetings, those cohorts are given resources, you know, throughout the year, for ways in which they can celebrate. It's really a partnership with the Office of Teaching and Learning, and so we are continuing to strengthen our resources and our support of schools' celebrations, particularly in times, you know, where we're in distance learning, and you can't do the traditional things that you normally do to celebrate. So, but it's still highlighted throughout the school district.
I wanted to add that I thought it was important to add these wins that we've had over the last, literally in the last year, because as someone who's been involved for a very long time in the civil rights struggle, it's modeling that it's okay to be both impatient about things that aren't, are not happening, and celebrate the successes. So it's a both-and situation. I wanted to model that, you know, we can be impatient and joyful and celebrate our successes at the same time. That's the only way civil rights leaders have managed to go through this. It's not just 55 or 60 years or 70 years of struggle, it's that you celebrate those incremental wins, and you keep pushing. So I thought it was important to highlight everything that we've done in the last year, literally, those three big things.
Any further board discussion on the resolution that is before us? Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
Right. The board will now vote on Resolution 6238, resolution in support of Black History Month. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6238 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative Shu voting yes. All right. Thank you, Nathaniel.
Maybe one thing that was also shared among the staff to all of us is what's been happening at Vernon, and I'm noticing that there's a jazz band video of the 7th and 8th grade band, and I'm wondering if that could be shared with the board or the broader community? Just moving, a lot of times, our community has a chance to see the bigger celebration that's happening in our schools, and because of COVID, we can't. So somehow, like elevating that throughout the month?
Absolutely, and I also want to mention one other thing, Director Brim Edwards, is we have several culturally specific partners that work with our schools, and are often in after-school programs and other programming. Even though we're in the pandemic, those activities have not stopped, and those groups are still working with our students, and so that's also a big part of Black History celebrations, too. So I would be remiss in not mentioning their contributions to our efforts.
Thank you.
I don't want to put our Director of Comms on here. It'd be nice, staff, if we'd kind of gather a little quick compilation with snippets from all of our schools, so that at the end of the month, we would have a nice little chronology of all the different kinds of activities that happened this month. Let's see if we can pull that together, if we can have our school leaders capture some of those video clips for us to synthesize together. That would be a nice way to kind of round out the month.
More joy.
More joy, indeed. So we begin our meeting tonight with that proclamation or that resolution as a way to solidify our focus on racial equity and on student-centeredness. We turn now to our consent agenda, which might feel a little weird that we have it so early in our meeting. Part of this is because we have staff here to answer questions, if the board has any, and we like to do this upfront and early on, so that staff who don't need to be present for the rest of the meeting can go about, normally, it's going home, but it just means turning off the camera and maybe getting some downtime. So now we turn to that consent agenda. Board members, if there are any items you would like to pool, we will set those aside for discussion and vote at the end of the meeting. But first, I ask Ms. Bradshaw, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
No.
All right, board members, are there any items you would like to pull from the consent agenda? Julia, are you speaking?
I'm trying to model the practice and turn my microphone off when I'm not speaking, sorry. I have an agenda item that I have a question about, but not to poll or receive a vote.
Okay, we'll take that question after we've moved the consent agenda. Does anyone else have anything they might like to pull?
Uh, maybe. First, I'd like to thank everyone who was involved for amending the minutes that had me recording votes that I did not take. But now I'm looking at the one from December 15th, and I think there might be an issue with that as well, the minutes that is. I think, I don't remember voting no on the motion on Resolution 6220. I highly doubt that that's a vote that I took. I don't see why I would.
Okay, so let's pull, let's go ahead and take that off the consent agenda for review. So we will not include the December meeting minutes. So that's the 12:15 minutes, correct, Nathaniel?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll pull those for review and bring those back at our next meeting.
Thank you.
All right, anything else about the consent agenda? All right, do I have a motion and second to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Oh, I couldn't tell who that was. Was it Rita and...
Take your pick. It was, I think, it was Director Konstant, I believe.
Okay. So Director DePass moves, and Director Konstant, sorry, can seconds the adoption of the consent agenda. Is there any board discussion? Julia, you had a question?
Yes, and this is for Deputy Superintendent Hertz, and unless Superintendent wants to take it, but it's about the two cleaning contracts that are to, there's two that are not to exceed $3 million. And they, it's my understanding, based on the responses I got to some questions, that they're coming from capital funds. One of the things that I've been asked a lot about in the community, and then just based on the money that we potentially are getting from the federal government for COVID, of, on something like this, where there may be a COVID application, how is it that we're sort of bucketing things? The way that Deputy Superintendent Hertz explained this, this is potentially have some flexibility to do a series of smaller contracts, so we have the speed, and we have people ready to go for some very specific projects, to be nimble. But I'm curious, because there is this narrative out there that, hey, you're getting all this money to do X for COVID, and/or, or you're not getting money to do X with COVID. And I'm just, I'm interested at a very high level of how we're bucketing things that we think may be sort of COVID expenditures, and sort of where those sit, how much there is, and, you know, whether that, you know, as we look long-term about how we're going to approach some of these costs, which some of them are capital costs or cleaning costs, how we get them bucketed out to be reimbursable, if they are at all.
Yeah, I think that, I think I get your question, Director Brim Edwards. I could see how that would be the case. There's COVID relief monies, there's a number of buckets, and I think this evening, what you see on the agenda is sort of this unique category of flexible services contractor pool, but I don't want to steal Deputy Hertz's thunder, she has her pearls on, so I'll let her explain.
Good evening. So we have, really, these are, we do this for HVAC systems, we've done this for plumbing. This is another example of us having a list of, gone through a competitive process to have approved contractors to do work that we need. Sometimes it's to respond to a repair, sometimes it's to respond to ongoing maintenance. So these were meant to, this cleaning is meant for bathroom tiles, steam cleaning, and sealing, and sometimes we'll have a final construction where we need cleaning up after the construction work. So these are meant, these are contractors that will be used in conjunction with other components. It's not necessarily due to the pandemic, but they also could be, if we have an urgent need, for instance, to disinfect a whole school, that would be beyond the scope of our normal work of our custodians. So it's meant to be, you know, an outside consultant to, or an outside contractor that comes in and works. It's, this is a multiple-year contract, it's something, there's different times that we need construction cleanup, whether it's, and this are for construction things that are not bond-related, these are smaller, we have other construction projects that occur from other capital funds that are non-bond funded. So these are intended for those kinds of projects, as well as ongoing significant maintenance, and just making our buildings as clean and as disinfected as possible. So we've been doing the bathroom tile steam cleaning and sealing in all of our schools before the pandemic occurred.
Which I'm sure that's really appreciated. Just to, maybe you're super specific, you gave the example of the full school that had to be cleaned, say there was some COVID, say we reopen, there's some COVID incident, we feel like we have to clean the whole school, you'd utilize this contract. I guess that what I'm asking is, is there some, and Director Scott, jump in here if you have the right word. Do you have a budget category where we're like, okay, we're going to take that out of the $3 million bucket, and we're going to put it over here because we think that's reimbursable?
We have COVID-related project number that we, we have one for 1920, we have one for 2021, so each year, we get to sign a new project number. And so any thing that is COVID-related, I can say that the FEMA reimbursement program for COVID has been with, originally, we were told, you know, here are all the rules, we submitted all of our paperwork based on those rules, then they said, no, wait, we're changing the rules. So then we had to wait because of that, we had a lowered dollar amount, and now we've got a new administration at the federal level, and they're saying, no, wait a minute, we have, we're going to relook at this again. So it's not clear yet on what we get reimbursed for, for, through FEMA, but I can tell you that we are certainly coding anything that might be COVID-related to that project code, so that we can submit for reimbursement once the rules are finally settled.
And I do think, Deputy Superintendent, that the latest federal package, the earmarks and constraints, we've been told are the same as they were before. So that we know what categories are reimbursable and...
Yeah, we know, we know what we're, we know if we are doing something due to the pandemic, and so we're coding things there. It may not be reimbursable, but we're coding it there so that we make sure, as we're submitting, and the rules are ever-changing, we make sure that we have tracked that separately.
Right, that's just what I wanted to know, thank you.
Can I just ask, I was going to send a separate email, but because you're here, and this question came up, I've been getting some emails, I think other people probably have as well, about where some of our CARES Act dollars have gone and other federal dollars. Is it possible to put a report up on our website? I'm assuming, I mean, it's sort of at our COVID page, that just sort of says, you know, interested to see how PPS has spent these dollars? I think even just at high-level categories would be really useful for the public.
And we do have... And we do have a community budget review committee, the CBRC, this Thursday, and we are reviewing a preliminary list with them. And so that is part of the packet that's being posted onto the website, but we'll make sure that it's more prominent in the budgetary webpage so that people can see how we're initially expected to spend. But the, as you know, things continue to evolve. So we, while we know what we've spent and we have set aside for projected expenses, the needs continue to evolve depending on what kind of program we're running at what period of time. So, but we'll continue to keep that updated.
Just to confirm, they're being used for COVID related purposes.
Yeah.
There was a question there.
No, no question.
Yeah, I mean, there's just this perception in the, in the community that because there's been so much discussion about it, that there, this perception that we have this huge bucket of money for, that, you know, could cover just about anything. So I think just the more that we can just be transparent about, you know, what we spend it on and you know, costs that we have that we haven't been able to get reimbursed for, I think it's just good information for the community to have. So they're realistic about what it is we can do.
And and we have a quarterly financial report coming up to the board at its next meeting. We could also include a component on this, this one pager that we've created for the CBRC in in that report. So it becomes part of the record. We have reported that to the board earlier this year, but we can certainly give you an update as we do our quarterly reports.
Any other questions about items on the consent agenda? Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment on the consent agenda?
No.
All right, the board will now vote on resolution six two three six as amended, removing the twelve fifteen minutes and six two three seven. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? The consent agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Shu voting.
Yes.
All right, thank you Nathaniel. Now we turn to one of the key parts of our board meetings, which is our student and public comment. And before we begin, I'd like to review our guidelines. First of all, thank you all so much for taking the time to attend the meeting and provide your comments. Public input does inform our work very strongly, and we look forward, as always, to hearing your thoughts, your reflections, your concerns. And our responsibility as a board is to actively listen. Our board office may follow up on board related issues raised during public testimony. We request that complaints or issues about individual employees be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter rather than being discussed in a public forum. If you have additional materials or items you would like to provide to the board or superintendent, we ask that you email them to publiccomment@pps.net. Now, please make sure when you begin your comment that you clearly state your name and spell your last name. You will have three minutes to speak and you'll hear sound after three minutes, which means it is time to conclude your comments. Ms. Bradshaw, do we have anyone signed up for student or public comment?
Yes. We have Gaius Shantri Vickery. Okay, say your name.
Hi, I'm Gaius Shantri Vickery. My preferred pronouns are he/him and I go to MLC. My last, oh, V I C K E R Y. And I honestly think that having school in person is unfair for the teachers because they're at risk of getting COVID and even if they have the vaccine, it's the plan that I heard of is, that I heard is ridiculous in my opinion and unfair for the students. Because one, you're only going to see half of your class for the rest of the year, which is kind of, kind of weird. And two, we shouldn't be going in full on in this if we don't have all the details of what we're going to do. And I think we should just keep on doing what we're doing right now because e- even if it's difficult for a lot of students, it's the safe way. And it's probably the right way for right now if we don't have a plan that makes complete sense. So yeah, that is what I have to say. And other thing is, bring back Sanjay. So, there you go.
Thank you very much for speaking tonight.
Thank you. We have Tyrion Merrill.
Hello, I'm named Tyrion Merrill. My preferred pronouns are he/him/his, M E R R I L.
Tyrion, Tyrion, we're having a little bit of a hard time hearing you. Can you speak up just a little bit?
Uh, yes. I am speaking about the decision of Kellogg and that dispute. The decision is not about like who wants to go to Kellogg. It is rather that it is our community school as Preston. And that we've been expecting to go, to attend, since our parents voted on the bond to rebuild it. And it is, it is the fact that we haven't been together in person for eleven months and now that you are, and now you are telling us that you are going to further divide this community, these friends and classmates who have known each other half of our young lives, that we will not continue to school together this fall. This is uncomprehendable and hurtful and it is inconsistent with the PPS board policy. Policies like rules should be consistent, otherwise why have them? Splitting up our little school, middle school, splitting up our middle school students is not equitable. And during this unprecedented time of a global pandemic and social and emotional chaos, our great PPS district board members and superintendent could do better and can do better. The current sixth and seventh, eighth graders should be moved together to Kellogg just as, out, just out of neighborhood. Sixth and seventh graders are being allowed to do things.
Thank you, Tyrion, and thank you for speaking up.
Thank you. We, Brayden Bectle.
Thank you, thank you for having me on. Thank you for having me at this meeting. My name is Brayden Bectle, B E C H T E L. My pronouns are he/him/his. And I am currently a sixth grade student at Preston, the Preston School. And one of the thirty, and one of the thirty-four children that are going to Hossford. I'm, please recognize that I am speaking out for all my friends and classmates who wish to go to Kellogg. I'm going to tell you why I want to go to Kellogg. I would like to point out that as my father Tyler Bectle had said as well, you have kept seats to open and have put imaginary students in those seats to keep them open. And although you assume that this is good for Kellogg, it isn't. Those seats should have children that are ready, who are ready to learn. And sure, that could slightly benefit due to the small amounts of students to work with, but I, but I think that all middle schoolers should be able to go regardless of the amount of imaginary students there are. Plus, I think that imaginary students can make some room. Another reason I would like to go to Kellogg is because I personally would love to make new friends. And yes, I can make new friends regardless of what school I go to. But if you walk in my shoes, Kellogg could be a place for plenty of students to gather and be together, including my new and old friends. And agreeably, the coronavirus does strain that. But after students get their vaccines and COVID nineteen calms down, we can do just that. My final reason is that Kellogg, unlike Preston, my current school, has more different and unique collectives that students can choose from. Also, the other school, Hossford, is already over its maximum capacity. And no offense, it would be foolish to put more kids. Another thing is that my parents, alongside many other families, have been paying money for this new school and the fact that you wish to not allow students in is threatening, frustrating and upsetting because of what they've done for Kellogg since I've been in second grade. Also, one last thing, riddle me this, would you rather keep all of the Preston students together as normal and put them in Kellogg? Or would you rather break the friendships of more than thirty students and put them in an overfilled school that some will have to take buses? You randomly drew a line through my neighborhood that was with us apart. I hope you, I hope that you take my reasoning into consideration and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. You have Nolan West.
My name is Nolan West, W E S T, and I'm currently a sixth grader at Preston.
Nolan, I'm gonna, Nolan, I'm gonna ask you to speak up as well. It's a little hard to hear you.
Okay. I use, I use he/him pronouns and I would like to speak about the Preston-Kellogg-Hossford issue. This pandemic has been hard for all of us and virtual learning is tough. I have my friends every day to get through it. To split us up now without warning would be worse if we're, than if we're actually in school. It's not right to take friendships that have been around for years. Just the hope of getting back, getting to go back to school with my friends has, has ke, has kept me going. I work hard in school so that I can be a good student and be around my friends. When I think about going back to school without most of my friends, it makes me, may not want to go back at all. To separate friends based on where they live would destroy the community. It's unfair to families and students especially. I hope that you take my opinion into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Chair Lowry, if I could ask, the audio was a little difficult. I caught some of it. If, 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 if student Nolan would be willing to submit his comments in in writing, so we might read them, be able to read them clearly, that would be helpful.
So Roseanne or Cara, can you follow up with Nolan to make sure we get a copy? Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Nolan. We have Lisa Kinsel.
Hi, good evening, PPS board members, Superintendent Guerrero, district staff and guests. I'm Lisa Kinsel. I use the pronouns she/her. My last name is spelled K E N S E L. I have three children that attend school in PPS and two of my children currently attend Preston K eight. I have one student who's a junior at Franklin High School. For the past twelve years, I've been an active community advocate for Preston and Southeast Portland, and I was here last two weeks ago to talk with you guys, share feedback on the Kellogg student assignment plan. So thanks for allowing me to come before you tonight to share some broader ongoing concerns in our community. Family and community engagement in schools is really important for our schools to be successful. And creating relationship with parents and the community based on trust is the foundation for that success. Public trust is vital for a thriving school district. And as our community has navigated this process, it's become really clear that trust in PPS has been greatly impacted. On November nineteenth, at the widely attended virtual open house meeting, the one proposal that was presented to the public showed that Creston Middle School students feeding to Kellogg as a single cohort. And then in December, the proposal shifted considerably with Creston Middle School students being asked to remain at their K eight until twenty twenty two. Looking at the proposal, it was unclear where room would be made until in twenty twenty two for our students to feed to any of the middle schools in our area. And when we asked PPS, we were told that it wasn't clear, yet trust that it would happen. Given the years of issues and lack of attention paid to our quadrant of the city by PPS for the last fifteen years, we felt uncomfortable that an equitable outcome would actually be realized for our students. This goes back to the closure of neighborhood elementary schools as focus option schools began to flourish. The closure of the original Kellogg Middle School and Marshall High School. The lack of transparency around the lead in our school water. The last minute change of plans with our middle school assignment and how data seemed to fluctuate wildly from meeting to meeting. And inconsistencies in adherence to PPS policy around cohort maintenance. We heard the board say that maintaining cohorts for out of neighborhood seventh and eighth graders feeding Kellogg was important, yet our community was not given the same consideration to maintain our cohort. And when we brought that to the attention of district staff, we were met with an entirely new plan that fractured off ten additional students. And we're told that because we were not willing to wait until twenty twenty two for middle school for our kids, this is what we get. I shared these things to illustrate how trust in PPS has been broken in Southeast Portland and in Portland, and specifically the Creston community. If we're going to make it through phase two as a cohesive Southeast community, it's going to be necessary to rebuild trust both for families and students. As a district, we need to have clearly defined goals, have a clear process that brings together stakeholder input, bring voices to the table that have not been present, be consistent in all policies, be open to community feedback and comments, and as a district, take responsibility for the process rather than having a volunteer group of parent advisors bear the weight of such decision making. It's important that we communicate well and throughout the process so that families feel heard and engaged. Engaging all families in a positive, positive manner will be vital to our district as we head back into the school building soon. We need to continue to ask if what we're doing is really best for kids, especially given the past year living through a pandemic and comprehensive distance learning. We need to remember that our students are watching and they're taking their lead from all of us. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. We have Tom Putman.
Good evening, school board members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Tom Putman, P U T T M A N, pronouns he, his and him. I'm a PPS parent of three children, a first grader, a fourth grader and a sixth grader. We love our schools and we love our teachers. But I struggle with the fact that across the US, almost sixty percent of students are back in the classroom in some form. For our district, that percentage is zero. Last summer, Oregon Department of Ed released guidelines for reopening schools safely. PPS spent the rest of the summer preparing plans for our school to start in the fall under all, all three scenarios, online, hybrid and in person. But we didn't open due to high COVID levels in our community. Reopening was pushed to November, then again in January to January twenty eighth. Our school, ready schools started, sat empty, our prepared plans sat on the shelf. In January, Department of Ed labeled their guidelines advisory. Governor Brown pushes to have schools open by January fifteenth, or by February fifteenth. With ready plans and ready schools, districts across Oregon responded resoundingly. They aggressively use new tools like limited in-person learning to test reopening plans while bringing over thirty thousand struggling online students back to the classroom. We were shocked to learn the opposite for our schools last week. Despite what we've been told since last summer, we do not have a plan to reopen. Our schools are not ready. Much of our school meeting was spent on overviews of preliminary concepts for reopening. We don't have buses figured out, school circulation figured out, classrooms figured out. We're not even sure if we have teachers to teach. Our schools admitted to having more questions than answers. At best, they hope to implement Lippi in mid-March and hope to offer hi, limited hybrid learning no earlier than mid-April. That's almost three months from now. School board, the district must be held accountable for this lack of preparedness, this lack of urgency. For what our families have endured over the last year, for the district asks for three more months to figure it out is appalling. But is it possible to change our trajectory? PPS has done a commendable job preparing options for our families, particularly those with the greatest, greatest needs and the greatest vulnerabilities. This is the right thing for us to be doing. But what about the families that are ready to be back in the classroom now? Do we have an option for them? Do we know how many would return? Have we even asked? I can think of nothing that would change our trajectory more than allowing the kids that want to be back in school to be back in school. Not three months from now, not next fall, but right now. School board, sixty percent of our country has already reopened their schools. I can understand not wanting to be first to reopen, but why be last? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I've not moved the next person over, but we have Beth Colon. She should be here just a second.
Hi. My name's Beth Colon. We have C O L O N. My pronouns are she/her. I teach third grade at James John Elementary. I come before the board and our superintendent this evening to ask that you pause plans for you. I come before the board and our superintendent this evening to ask that you pause plans for reopening buildings this school year. And focus all efforts on providing equitable access for our most atneed students. Year after year, PPS states that we are working on equity and social justice. We've redefined the graduate portrait and we've made many attempts at courageous conversations with staffs. However, meaning well and doing well are not the same thing. As educators, we teach our students about individuals who notice injustice and they stand up against it. And then we encourage them to do the same thing. But I ask you, are we doing the same thing? Are you doing the same thing? The PAT Equity Team and other concerned PAT members sent a letter to the board and superintendent last week. In a reply from Russ Brown, Sean Byrd, and Danny Levesma, it stated that families of color have chosen to participate at rates of voluntary limited instruction greater than their representation in the PPS student body. In fact, over fifty percent of students in the, in Lippi are black or Latinx. Because we're offering those opportunities to our students of color at higher rates than any other students. This letter also states that as a system, the district is intentionally trying to move beyond calling out disproportionality and what is racist. Data is showing us that our BIPOC communities are considerably more vulnerable, considerably more likely to be living in multi-generational households, and considerably more likely to have less access to vaccines. If we are genuinely committed to working on social justice as a district, we cannot in good conscience bring back our most at-risk students into buildings at this time. I want nothing more than to be back in my classroom with my students. I can't wait for the days when we can sprawl out on the carpet and play Mac themes together. When we can break into small groups, when we can head out onto the playground for an afternoon of reading outside in the sun. But we have to face it, going back into our schools is not going to look like that right now. The Simon Kaffes model that we're currently discussing as a district is not going to look like that either. It, um, it gives neither our students in the classroom nor the students at home the attention and the focus that they deserve from educators. Instead of rushing back into buildings, I urge you to utilize the funding that we have to target our at-risk students for one-on-one instruction online with the substitutes that we have at our disposal and focus on reopening buildings only after our most vulnerable communities have been vaccinated. As educators, as schools, as a district, as a state, we owe our students, our families, our educators, a plan that values not just their education, but also their wellbeing. Please, 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 keep our BIPOC families in your minds and in your hearts as you develop our plans for reopening schools. And remember that we are still in school. We are still doing school. It is simply at home right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Barb Macon.
Hi, my name is Cassia McGeletti, filling in for Barb Macon tonight. My last name is spelled M I C H E L E T T I. And I use the pronouns she and her. Dear School Board Members and Superintendent Guerrero, I am a high school teacher and a parent of two students in PPS. I know I'm not alone in expressing my surprise, frustration, and disappointment with the decision to implement in-person learning in Portland Public Schools. As educators, we constantly talk about having evidence and doing research to back up our findings to our students. And in this case, the PPS School Board and Administration have not done their research. PPS has spent countless hours engaging with the community over boundary changes to support the opening of a new school in Southeast Portland. I ask you to consider why you have not given the same respect to communities most affected by COVID, where the decision to receive in-person education literally could be a choice of life and death. Have you heard from the communities where zip codes paint a dire situation of COVID impact? Have you hosted listening sessions at the schools of these zip codes? Have you intentionally and actively reached out to every family with language-appropriate contact to learn what they want for their children? And most of all, have you heard how the people that will be most impacted truly feel are students? These families and students' voices count too. PPS cannot afford to miss this opportunity to set a high standard and uphold the equity lens they frequently reference. As parent, as a parent of two students in PPS, one in elementary and one in middle school, I am fed up with the concept that we must keep up with some arbitrary idea that students are falling behind. If we look at education as an opportunity to grow, my own children have had amazing growth. And I may not always be the areas that we measure through standardized testing. But by continuing to subscribe to a keeping up with the Joneses mentality, PPS will only further divide our community from the haves and have-nots. I'm here today to plead with you to please reconsider reopening schools to in-person instruction. Unless you have heard voices from all communities across Portland Public Schools and have resounding support for that decision. I also ask you to consider what level of stress and strain you will put on students, staff, and family members by opening partially for a mere couple months rather than staying the course and starting strong in the fall, when all communities will hopefully have the opportunity to be vaccinated. Opening schools in person will not solve anyone's problems, not suicide rates, not jobs, and not social emotional engagement. Rather, it would only put additional strain on a system already stretched very thin and will increase a less equitable situation. Additionally, I want you to hear that teachers are very worried about the disproportionate risk to our BIPOC families' health and lives. If schools open for in-person instruction this spring instead of focusing their resources to help such vulnerable communities is not living up to the frequently mentioned equity lens that PPS likes to talk about. With all the time, money, and effort that is being put towards planning to the return to in-person school, the district should be, um, sorry. The district should be working towards supporting families and students in comprehensive distance learning, filling in the gaps where supports are desperately needed. Finally, I implore you to put the work to hear and see the positive examples of teaching and learning that is occurring in our current CDL model during this pandemic. Instead of creating yet another change that is not based on research and full community collaboration. I also would like to say that I want to thank Director DePass and her remarks at the beginning of this meeting. If we are going to hold PPS to the Black History Month proclamation, the disproportionate impact of COVID on Black and other BIPOC communities is exactly what I'm asking you to consider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, that's everybody who signed up who's here.
Thank you, Kara, and thank you for everyone for speaking. I know that, um, this is a very difficult time in lots of ways, and we heard different perspectives on reopening. And we appreciate hearing all the different voices as we continue to navigate the work of the district. Um, we continue to elevate student voice by hearing mix from our student representative Nathaniel Shu. Nathaniel, would you like to provide your report?
I would, thank you. Um, I'd like to begin by recognizing the fact that tonight is our first meeting in the third quarter. This marks the halfway point in the school year as well as the beginning of our fourth consecutive quarter in distance learning. For me, as a senior, this moment feels like something of a milestone. The prospect of graduation, of leaving PPS, is beginning to feel less like an abstract concept and more like an event that will actually happen. It's extremely bizarre, especially in an all-virtual environment. I would like to provide a brief update as to the state of our student survey on returning to in-person education. As of this afternoon, we have received over three thousand one hundred responses, which is almost a quarter of our entire high school population. And an increase of about one thousand nine hundred from when I presented our initial results at our last meeting. We now have a high volume of responses out of four additional schools, Grant, Franklin, Lincoln, and Roosevelt. In addition to more responses from other schools. It's worth noting that at Grant in particular, we currently have over sixty percent of the entire student body responding, a truly phenomenal response rate. The survey will be closed for good sometime next week, and I will provide a final overview of the results at our meeting on the twenty-third. In the meantime, I highly encourage all members of SLT and the board to browse through the document I shared with you after our last meeting containing the anonymized qualitative responses, which I have been updating periodically. It is a genuinely insightful document. As a reminder, it's entitled reopening, uh, student survey qualitative feedback, and it is an X, um, it's a Google sheet. Um, and I'll just conclude tonight by giving a shout out to Margaret Calvert-Jefferson's longtime principal for her recent promotion to Regional Superintendent for High Schools and MPG. Uh, both Kay Thomas, Jefferson's DSC representative, and I think selecting her for this role, role was an excellent choice and look forward to collaborating over the rest of the year. Thank you.
Hey Nathaniel, this is Director Konstam. Um, have the responses to the survey, um, given the incredible participation since the last time you reported to us, um, have the opinions shifted much or just more of what we saw before?
Well, I haven't had time to go into the results with Dr. Brand's team, so bear in mind that this is extremely preliminary, what I'm about to say, but it looks like overall, they haven't shifted too much, although there have been some changes. Um, but and, and of course, there's been an absolute ton of additional qualitative responses. Um, and I haven't even really begun to dig into all of them, but, um, it doesn't look like the quantitative responses have shifted all that much.
All right, thank you, Student Representative Shu. Superintendent Guerrero, I believe you also have a report for us tonight.
I do. Thank you, Chair Lowry. Um, and I think we have a handful of slides here. Buenos tardios to all of our listening audience. Um, February ninth, um, next slide, I, I would like to start with, um, a quick preview of, of tonight's, uh, staff update as we continue preparing for a gradual reopening of classrooms and school campuses. Our buildings are ready and, and eager to, to receive our students at the appropriate time. Uh, staff will be sharing more details in just a moment as part of our regular update, uh, to the board and the community, but I do want to start by acknowledging, um, the many messages, uh, I and other district administrators continued to receive. Uh, clearly, there, there are many thoughts, uh, and strong opinions that continue to be expressed. Thank you for sharing those. Uh, please know, every one of your messages are read, noted, and considered. Um, and they range, uh, across the spectrum. Some parents would like us to open as soon as possible, while others indicate clearly that going back to an in-person model is not something they're interested in at this time. Uh, I also want to personally thank those many community leaders I have had an opportunity to speak with, including many culturally specific partners for sharing your perspectives directly. Uh, we're trying and attempting to balance this diverse, often contrasting set of preferences while ensuring a continuity of learning, uh, for our students. So as complex as this challenge may be, uh, a challenge the districts everywhere are facing and under different uh, local conditions and guidance, guidelines, uh, our objective is to, to try to outline a plan that offers our families options to choose from. Tomorrow, we will be sharing with families, uh, a number of details about what our developing proposed hybrid learning model could look like for April, May, and June. And later this week, we'll be surveying our kindergarten through fifth grade families to get a real-time, up-to-date sense of families' learning model preferences for their students and what they believe would be most helpful to their students regarding academics and another support. So we will be asking families to respond to that short survey by February twenty-second. And, and we will roll out a description of what the options being made available are and other tools that help make the survey process, uh, as easy, clear, and meaningful for them as possible. Uh, middle and high school families should expect your own update soon. Next slide. But at a high level, if I could describe, our, our proposed hybrid model for families who choose it would mean that their students would be assigned a morning or an afternoon time slot to attend school in person four days a week for two hours and fifteen minutes each day. When not in classrooms, students would, would continue with distance learning activities. We know there are some members of the community who are adamant about reopening as soon as possible. I said it already. On the other hand, many of our families are not yet comfortable with the idea of sending their student back to in-person learning. We've heard from them. Our job is to continue to develop and roll out these options as many as we can to help meet the needs and the comfort levels of our PPS families. So perhaps more than anything, I want to be sure to be clear that hybrid learning in the spring is a voluntary option. Families who are more comfortable with their students remaining in online comprehensive distance learning for the remainder of the school year can choose to do so. Families indicating their preference will be helpful to our planning. I also want to underline that you'll be, what you'll be hearing about our proposed model for elementary hybrid model. Uh, we continue to be in conversation with the teachers' union and are hopeful that we can come to some agreements, as we have previously for comprehensive distance learning and limited in-person instruction about some of the details of this proposed hybrid plan. So we're further along with hybrid planning for elementary grades than in the secondary levels. And I know Dr. Brown and Dr. Byrd will talk, uh, a bit more about, uh, why that is. Uh, and it's some, some of the constraints and issues that we've discussed previously with, with directors. I should also note that any hybrid launch is continuing to be contingent on state and county guidelines and allowances related to COVID nineteen metrics and on our continuing conversations with our teachers' union. So I know folks have heard that some of the guidelines are advisory, and that is true. But some of them continue to be mandatory and we have to work around those variables. Finally, we continue this week to increase limited in-person programming with Lippi now at fifteen schools as of this week, serving over two hundred and thirty students so far. You'll re- you'll recall that Lippi is aimed at meeting the needs of specific groups of students based on needed educational, relational, social, emotional, curricular, instructional, and assessment support. So we expect to continue rolling out Lippi at all schools by the end of the month. Uh, so much more to come later this evening, and again, all families should look for a detailed message tomorrow. Kindergarten through fifth grade families should look for a survey by Friday. Next slide. And Nathaniel sort of hinted at this already. Uh, I'm very pleased to announce that, that we have found our, our new Regional Superintendent for High Schools and multiple pathways for graduation. While this important role was advertised broadly, uh, it ended up, we didn't have to look far and in the end have promoted one of our own. Margaret Calvert, a, a veteran PPS educator, joins our Office of, of School Performance after an outstanding eleven-year run as principal at our Jefferson High School. She led Jefferson's transition from a comprehensive neighborhood school to a middle-college-focused high school built on partnerships with Portland Community College and Portland State University, with all students completing college coursework before graduation. Jefferson, as you know, sits in the Albina neighborhood, the heart of Portland's Black community. Margaret deepened partnerships with key culturally-specific agencies. These collaborations resulted in numerous improved student outcomes, including substantial gains in graduation rates for Black and Latinx students. In recognition of her work, Margaret was named Oregon's High School Principal of the Year by the Oregon Association of Secondary School Administrators in two thousand sixteen. And is, as is part of our tradition here with when appointing senior staff, uh, we like to invite, uh, them to say a few words. So I think we have, uh, Ms. Calvert here on deck. Margaret?
All right, is that, good evening, everyone. Um, I thank you Superintendent Guerrero, Board of Directors, uh, Student Representative Shu, thank you for the warm welcome. Um, I look forward to, um, making the transition to this new role and and taking a step, uh, to look at the city as a whole. Um, Jefferson always as, at place will be dear to my heart and central to the work um, that I've done and will continue to do in the district. What I am, uh, very excited to join a team, uh, in the Office of, uh, School Performance uh, with Lisa Shore, Karina Wolf, and Lorna Fastbuckle, of course. Um, and supporting our incredible, uh, educators and students at the high school level. Um, this fall and, and through this, uh, the pandemic last spring, what we've seen is an incredible amount of creativity, ingenuity, um, and community built in very unique ways. And, um, the challenges are great. Uh, we also face, um, the realization that systemic inequities have been laid bare. Uh, so is with anticipation, um, that So it is with anticipation that literally we roll up our sleeves and enter into the work, and we do it collectively. So I'm very excited about reaching out and working with people that I have been colleagues with for a long time and then also really feeling the breadth of the community as a whole in Portland. So I've been fortunate to have been located deeply in one community, in one space, for a number of years and look forward to reaching out and working closely with communities across the city. It's, as the year has started and as we grow with, as Nathaniel said, we're in the third quarter. It's hard to believe that we're almost a year into distance learning and really thinking about how do we support students as they make the transitions, both from grade levels but also to their life after their time in PPS. So there's lots of opportunity and challenge at the same time, but it's with great hopefulness and optimism that I look forward to joining the team and working closely with the staff at the BSC. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. As Ms. Calvert leaves her post at Jefferson, Ricky Allen takes over there as interim principal. Mr. Allen, of course, is a very familiar face at Jefferson High, having served as vice principal at the school since 2008. Ricky's career in education goes a lot further back than that, I think 1980. We thank him for taking on this important interim role, and we look forward soon to beginning a very intensive, community-wide process to identify a leadership profile and a process for identifying Jefferson's next permanent principal. So thank you in advance to the Jefferson community for what I expect will be a very engaged process. And next slide, more joy, more joy. Four of regional superintendents Calvert's high schools now recently brought home quite a haul of trophies after dominating the We the People Constitutional State Tournament on January 30th. State champions Grand High School and runners-up Cleveland High School are now set to go to the national competition. Grant and Cleveland were joined by teams from Lincoln and Franklin in what was almost, almost a PPS clean sweep of the top five slots. So this is really a remarkable outcome. Our congratulations to our amazing students whose dedication and hard work certainly paid off, and our thanks to our Constitution team advisors. And we have a few of them joining us this evening. Just to round out my report with the chair's permission, we'd like to invite them to share a quick word on behalf of our con team students about what this experience has meant to them. If we could teleport, I know we have three of the four, maybe four of the four here with us this evening. If you wouldn't mind each introducing yourself and your school.
They should be there.
Hi, I'm Angela De Pasquale. I'm from Grant High School, and the program is just such a terrific opportunity for students. To see them grow and shine over the course of a year is really wonderful. And I am so excited for Cleveland and Sadie Adams, who's working so hard over there to develop that program and even does some great outreach in getting all of the area teams together to do some scrimmages. So really appreciate you, Sadie, and welcome to the, to the club.
Thank you, Angela. I'm Sadie Adams, and I'm the teacher at Cleveland. I started this team at Cleveland five years ago. So we were pretty surprised but very, very excited to have gotten second this year, and the kids are awesome, running on preparing for Nationals, while all of us adults are trying to figure out how to go about this, since we've never done it before. So it's kind of fun to be doing this in all of the distance learning, and it's been really amazing to see how well the kids have engaged and just, I don't know, how they're thriving through all of this. It's been awesome to see. So thank you for having me tonight.
Hello, my name is Patrick Miggy-Janks. I'm from Lincoln High School. I wanted to congratulate all of our student participants in the We the People program, especially Sadie and Angela from Grant High School in Cleveland. I'm so excited that you'll be representing Oregon at Nationals this year. And Sadie, I'm really looking forward to the day that you get to take a group to Washington DC. I know that's, that is something you're definitely looking forward to. And I echo what you've said about the opportunity that this year in particular has afforded our young people to learn about the United States Constitution and the rule of law and the importance of governance and community building. So I would also like to thank our volunteer coaches and our wonderful parents who help support our program for these young people, and thank all of you.
Hi, I'm David Marsh, Franklin High School. This is my second year with the We the People program. It's been a crazy year, to put it lightly, but I'm super proud of what the students all did and accomplished this year. And I have to thank the coach, I think my, the coaches. Without them, it wouldn't have been possible. I don't think my brain could have physically have managed. I think it just would have, you know, exploded and just been all over the place. But the coaches really, really made it all possible this year, just because it's so difficult and the amount of time and effort that goes into it is, is a lot. Oregon is, is one of the top states in the entire country for this program. So it is, it's always an honor making it to state and competing against other top programs. So thank you all.
Thank you, Angela, Sadie, Patrick, and David, and congratulations again to all of our con team student participants from Grant, Cleveland, Lincoln, and Franklin. PPS continues to be a powerhouse in Oregon, and we'll be cheerleading you on to Nationals, and hopefully we'll be bringing it home again. So thank you.
Superintendent Guerrero, before our, the representative coaches leave, I just want to also, as a parent of a former con team member, I know how many hours you put into helping your students and how many hours the students put into this and to see what's happening in PPS across the district is incredible. And just again, I know how much time it is throughout the year, and I can't even imagine doing it in a COVID year. So thank you. Just on behalf of all of the students, I know for my son, it was a life-changing experience.
Thank you very much. I think Patrick said it well. What a year to really hone in on our Constitution and democracy. I just have one more slide here for you, and it's really just a conclusion, but a little sign that appears that we found in the Creative Science School community garden. So poignant, little signs here and there all around our school district expressing their sentiments these days. So thank you, Chair. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Superintendent. We are going to go ahead and do our board committee and conference reports. Again, we have this closer to the top of our board agenda as a way to share and make really visible the work that the board is doing. And then once we are finished with our committee and conference reports, we'll go ahead and take probably a five-minute break before we turn to our big update that I know many people are waiting to hear on COVID, COVID, there we go. I'm making COVID and hybrid one word, which is a problem. COVID, hybrid, and Lippi. All right, so we do our committee reports in alphabetical order for no other reason than that is easy. So we start with our audit committee. Director Brim Edwards, do you have anything to report?
I do. We had an audit. But I should note, there was also something very memorable that happened this last week. We had a PPS alum who played in the Super Bowl on the winning team. So Nadama Kunsu from Grant, so always proud of our alums. It's the second Super Bowl, but the first win. So it should be noted, and that's much more important probably than the audit committee report. So at the last audit committee, and I didn't provide this report because it was so late in the evening, last committee meeting, but the audit committee recently received the ACH or the Automated Clearinghouse Payment Method Audit. And as people may, the board may recall, on August 16th, 2019, PPS experienced a fraudulent transaction attempt through its ACH payment method, an amount of about $2.9 million, $2.9 million. And fortunately, we were able to recover the funds. But following that, Deputy Superintendent Claire Hertz requested the audit committee to add the ACH audit to the audit plan. The audit committee reviewed it, recommended it to the, to the board. The board approved adding it to the plan, and the audit has been completed and presented to the audit committee. And it's a relatively short audit, and it's posted on the audit, on the PPS webpage, on the audit committee, if anybody wants to read it, and I'll circulate it to the board. But essentially, the two internal auditors tested the processing, the processes and the procedures that PPS had put in place to prevent fraud in terms of our vendors and making fraudulent submissions for payments. And the auditors, they finished their field work in November of 2020, 2020. And I'm going to just read that they've completed the audit, and based on the results of the work performed within the scope of the audit, it's the auditor's opinion that overall the internal controls over the district's ACH payment program follow best practices in design and are working efficiently and effectively to mitigate potential fraud and safeguard district funds. So good work to the staff at PPS who implemented some new processes and systems to protect our resources. Also, I thank the internal auditors for taking on this work. So appreciate all that. And it should be noted that there is one outstanding piece is that as, at the end of the field testing that was done, the district had not yet restarted ACH payments of the type that had, where we'd had the fraudulent transaction. So once those payments restart, they'll need them, there's going to be a need to go in and just test to make sure that as the payments flow through, that we're confirming that the processes and practices are actually still work, are working when we're actually flowing payments through. But the initial audit showed that the work was done to protect our funds, and this is a huge issue across, well, the private sector, government sector, that fraudulent ACH transactions are relatively common, and we're just very fortunate that we didn't lose any funds and that we now have systems in place and that we had an audit to pressure test that work. So that is the result, that was the primary agenda item of our last audit committee meeting. Do any of the other audit committee members want to add anything? Okay.
Thank you, Director Brim Edwards. All right, Director Pass, anything from the Slow Improvement Bond Committee?
We met on February 4th, and we had an eerily short meeting. I think it's reflective of just the amount of work that happens before those Thursday meetings that happen in the evening. We rolled out a draft work plan that looks at the next two, or we're in quarter one, but looks at a series of potential agenda items, issues to discuss between now and May. We still have some outstanding issues having to do with just getting updates and when to plug those into the work plan. But yeah, that's, and we have another meeting coming up in about five weeks.
All right, Director Moore, anything from CBRC?
Yes, the CBRC, it's the Community Budget Review Committee. The last meeting was on January 28th, and at that meeting, the CBRC members were, were working on trying to clarify sort of their own work plan. And they are eager to get more clarity on how they can meaningfully assist the board in deliberations on the budgets beyond simply issuing its two annual reports. So as a board liaison to the CBRC, I invite you all to provide any concrete ideas you might have about specific asks that we might want to make of CBRC as we head into the budget season. And the next meeting of CBRC is this coming Thursday on February 11th.
Great, thank you. I think that's a really great point, Director Moore, and for all of us as a board, the things we'd like from CBRC, because I know we've mentioned a couple of times where we would like to see some things. So continue to think about that and get in touch with Director Moore. Sorry, that was very loud. Charter and alternative programs. Director Konstam?
Thank you. We met last week. We're in a renewal process with two of our charter schools, Arthur Academy and Opal School. And so this last meeting was our deep dive into their data and results and their renewal applications, where they also have an opportunity to raise questions and issues to the district. These are both schools that are in very good standing, both in terms of academic performance of their children and also financial stewardship and just stability of their organizations. So that makes our work relatively easy, but still, it was a good conversation. And they also, you know, raised some sort of systemic issues that make doing business difficult for them. So we talked about how we might address some things in our legislative priorities or just at least discuss addressing some issues in our legislative priorities that they raised that, that make life hard for charter schools. I won't go into the details. But anyway, good, rich conversation. Opal School is having an interesting transition to remote learning, given that they are, you know, not a school that uses any technology ordinarily, no computers in their classrooms. So just transitioning all their students to remote learning has been a really interesting challenge. But they still, they still use the language of playful inquiry and learning together. And we had some good conversation about like, how does their project-based learning approach translate to the isolation of distance learning? So I would encourage everybody to attend our hearing, which is Thursday from 3:00 to 5:00, if you're able, which is a chance for the public to come forward and provide us any input about these renewal applications. And then next step is they come to the board for approval of their 10-year renewal application. And that's all I got.
Director Konstam, I just have a process question, because I think last year I missed one of the hearings, and I'm also not going to be able to make the hearing tomorrow because of a work conflict. And I can't, I think last year the approvals were just in the consent agenda. And I'm wondering if that's going to be the same process this year, or are we actually at the board meeting have a present, at least a brief presentation on the program and the charter for the?
Yeah, it's my understanding that we will have a presentation. You can correct me, Chair Lowry, if that's wrong, and a brief discussion, but also all the materials are posted, of course. So I encourage everybody to just look at the results. It's usually in this renewal process, we look with a fine-tooth comb at a lot of the state assessments for each of these schools. Of course, we have no state assessment data from last year, so the conversation is a little bit different. But I encourage everybody to take a look at what's posted there to renewal applications, and then we can certainly have a discussion at the board after the hearing.
And I think, Director Brim Edwards, that we handle the different types of charter actions differently. Some of them are a sort of an annual, some of them are an extension, and some of them are a renewal. So the extensions, I think, were what was in the consent agenda, and the renewal was what we voted on as a separate line item. That's what I remember from last year, but again, it's been a year, so I could be wrong on that one. And I think, Director Konstam, this year we have, is it three renewals and no extensions? Is that correct?
Two renewals.
So we'll, we'll work with Roseanne to make sure those are on the agenda in a way that board members feel like they have enough time to really digest all of that information. time to really digest all of that information. All right, Intergovernmental, Director Scott?
Yes, thank you. We have a meeting coming up Thursday, this Thursday, from 5:00 until 6:00 o'clock. And we will be getting a legislative update from Courtney Westling, having a bill discussion around some specific bills, a little bit more specific around specific bills that impact education. We will return again to the intergovernmental part of the school reopening discussion. I, I want to stress, this is not a broad school reopening discussion for people who might be watching or other Board members. That, that's happening, you know, tonight at the Board meeting. This is just very specifically focused on whether there are any intergovernmental issues or asks that are needed that that committee can help with. And then, other items for discussion, and one of those that has come forward is whether the district will be interested in, or the Board will be interested in sending a letter to Monoma County supporting municipal broadband project and specifically a funding request that they have for a project manager to help move that forward. So, we'll be talking about that on Thursday as well.
Cool, that sounds very, there's some exciting possibilities there for collaboration. Director Moore, do you want to talk about policy, or do you want to wait since you have like, half the meeting is all about policy?
Well, there's other stuff going on, so why don't I do the other stuff? And we'll talk about the three policies before us tonight later. So, the Policy Committee continues to work through a very packed work plan for this year. And we'll be talking a, a little bit later about three policies that were recommended by the committee. But in other work, we're, we're still working on a number of other policies. At the next committee meeting on February 17th, we're going to be talking about the Climate Crisis Response Policy, Student Assignment Policy, Comprehensive Sexuality Education Policy, Oral Public Complaint Policy, and Computer Use Policy. So, most of those are, while they're in varying degrees of, of the process, various stages of the process, but all of them will eventually be coming before the Board. And we invite anybody who's interested in these, in these policies to tune in. The next meeting is February 17th from 4:00 to 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And I just want to note that it's a Wednesday. Our, our meetings are usually on Mondays, but because of the President's Day holiday, it's been shifted to Wednesday. So, for all of you people who are, you know, waiting with bated breath for the next committee meeting, just wanted to give you a heads up. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Julia or Scott, do we have anything from the Rose Quarter?
No, but I do have a correction to my previous report. Can I just make it really quick? On the ACH Audit, the qualifier that I missed was the word "new." So, we are still making payments to vendors using the ACH method of payment. But if you're a new vendor, we're not, we're not putting those through, so you're not using the ACH. And that is what we have to test, because that was, or if you've changed your information. And that's, that is the, the weakness that we had previously was when somebody was going to change, fraudently changing information. So, it's not that there aren't any ACH payments. Thank you for letting me correct that.
I thought you were going to correct that Ndamukong Sue maybe was not the first PPS alum to win a Super Bowl, but?
He's, he's not the first alum. I just said he was not an alum who won, because I think we, um, Mel Renfro?
I, I'm going to defer to you on this one, Julia.
All I know about Ndamukong, sorry, Ndamukong Sue is that he has a great chicken place here in Southwood. So, Bay's Chicken, that's so, Super Chicken, Super Bowl, he's got it, he's got it all covered. All right, anything else? That's my Super Bowl joke of the night. Any other committee or conference reports?
Just another comment, Chair Lowry. I, I should have recognized this at the beginning of the meeting. I just want to acknowledge Mary Kane is, is playing the role of counsel this evening. And I just want it noted as we go into a brief intermission or halftime here, she has not had to throw a, a flag on the field yet. So, or, or had to pipe up. So, I should have said this at the beginning of the meeting.
I did promise Liz that I would behave tonight and try to make Mary's life easier, so.
The only one who's not going to play nice is Scott.
Which we always expect. All right. We are going to go ahead and take a five-minute break now, so we'll go ahead and come back at 7:45 for our hybrid Lippi and COVID update. Thanks, everyone. At 7:45. And turn now to the update on COVID Hybrid and Lippi. So, I turn this over to you, Superintendent Guerrero, to bring up all of the staff and all of the information we need for this amazing update.
Yes, thank you, Chair Lowry. So, tonight, we're going to provide another extensive update to share with Directors and the community on our ongoing reopening planning. We have a star-studded cast here of senior leaders. So, you'll hear from our Chief Assistant Performance, Chief of Schools, Chief of HR, Senior Advisor for Racial Equity. And they'll each introduce themselves as, as they speak. So, we do have a slide deck for you, and I think they are ready to share information with you and take your questions, and a bunch of other staff in the virtual green room that are happy to join as well. So, Dr. Brown?
Good evening, Superintendent Guerrero, members of the Board and community, pleased to join you again this evening to give an update. Next slide, please. As Superintendent mentioned, could be a number of us speaking this evening. Is this the right PowerPoint? I think we've got the wrong PowerPoint here.
We want the Portland Public Schools one.
One moment while I pull it up.
Let's have a better plan.
Touche.
Cut and paste from Boise.
That would be an easy way to do all this really hard work, just poach somebody else's presentation.
Careful what you ask for, Director Constam.
We're just double-checking, Superintendent.
I didn't even notice it was the wrong plan. So, what does that say about me? I was reading the little bullet points.
I think Sean was trying to pull a fast one.
I had 72 questions prepared about that presentation. And now I find out it's the wrong one?
I'll just say, staff puts a lot of time, care, and effort into how they share our plans. So, it goes through a number of iterations, but go ahead, Dr. Brown.
This feels much better, looks familiar. This, I think, is our work. Yeah, so today, you're going to hear from a number of us. I'll start off with an opening, talking briefly about the metrics, some of the health and safety measures that we're required to continue to do. Our Chief Operating Officer, Dan Young, will spend a little bit of time talking about all the efforts that have been done to improve air quality in our schools. He'll be followed by Chief Reese, who will talk about vaccine distribution. And that'll be followed then by Sean Bird, who will lead through and discuss our limited in-person instruction and expansion of that, as well as the proposed hybrid model of instruction. And then, our Chief of Engagement will round out with, talking about our student and family engagement at the end and the survey that's going out. Next slide, please. Thank you. Yes, throughout all the presentations this year, again, our work has got, is organized around our guiding principles. Everything that we do is centered on racial equity and social justice. We spend a great deal of time reaching out to our communities to, to highlight that. And we've spent time really emphasizing the importance about elevating voice and choice as we move forward. Again, at the forefront of our work has been health and safety. While the Governor did relax the metrics, the remaining guidance is in effect. And there, there are many things that we have in place to provide for the health and safety of our students, staff, and larger community. We have spent a lot of time working on, on relationships, building and leaning into our relationships in this work. And certainly, there has been a ton of innovation, structural innovation. And we're beginning to look at how that innovation can carry forward into, to our learner recovery plans. Next slide, please. We have continuing good news in terms of the metrics. At one point, you know, the, the two-week totals here were well over 500. They have come down with the adjustment of the threshold to align with the Harvard Global Health Institute at greater than 350. We've been under that for a while. We're now sitting at 194.6 cases, which is roughly 12 to 13 cases a day over a two-week period. That's what we're, what we're averaging right now. So, it's good news. We've been trending in the right direction. Thankful to the, the community and everyone who's been leaning in to make it easier for us to be able to open our schools and have kids back in place. Next slide, please. And again, just for clarity, because I, I hear this bubble up from time to time, the, the Governor did relax the health metrics. They aligned them to the Harvard Global Health Institute. That did not change the other requirements. The other requirements with, within Ready School Safe Learners remain mandatory. There are over 100 different requirements that we need to lean into. Some of those are, are things that we're used to, that the idea that students are expected and staff are expected to wear masks, except under some circumstances for students with disabilities. We have to have symptom spaces. We must maintain at least 35 square feet per person in a classroom. We have to screen students as they come into the building. And we must maintain stable cohorts. And I've seen some confusion around this. The requirement here is that, that a student can't come in contact with more than 100 people during the course of a week in, in terms of that cohort. I, I saw some folks floating around 100 per day. Now, it's 100 per week. It's, it's a more rigorous standard there. And again, we have more rigorous cleaning protocols in place in our buildings. Have made efforts to improve air quality. And again, we have this ongoing relationship with our local public health partner that we vet our plans through as we move forward. So, with that, I'm going to transition over to Dan Young, our Chief Operating Officer, for him to spend a little time talking about those efforts to improve air quality in our buildings.
Good evening, Directors, Superintendent, and Student Representative Shu. If we can move to the, oh, perfect, next slide. Similar to symptom screening, wearing face masks or, or hand washing, building ventilation is an important component of PPS's COVID health and safety strategy. When we first began discussing our ventilation systems, we wanted guidance from public health experts. Therefore, we reached out to Monoma County Public Health Department for direction. In our discussions with the county, they recommended we partner with a certified industrial hygienist to develop a district-wide ventilation plan. So, so that's what we did. Last year, we hired environmental health and safety firm PBS Engineering to develop a building ventilation plan. As we worked with PBS, we were careful to ensure that the plan conformed to the guidance of HVAC technical organizations and public health organizations, including the CDC, the EPA, OSHA, ASHRAE, which was the, the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioning Engineers, and the county. When the plan was in final draft form, we met again with Monoma County Public Health, including their Director, to make sure the plan met all standards and requirements before we began implementation. And in short, they were very happy with the plan that we had developed, and they did not recommend that we make any changes to it. We also reviewed the plan with our Health Advisory Panel, who provided some minor comments. And after that, we moved into our implementation phase. Some examples of implementation actions include prioritizing bringing in outside air into our schools by adjusting the ventilation systems to maximize the amount of fresh air coming into the buildings, running the systems longer each day. So, we run them about two hours longer in the morning and two hours later in the evening, and also running them continually throughout the day, or when they would shut down when not heating or cooling. The plan includes a ventilation system maintenance checklist that we've hired outside mechanical contractors to complete at every school. And they've completed these last month, gone through every school. We've completely, we've cleaned the air intakes at every school and continue to do this on a regular basis. We've also purchased portable HEPA filters for all school symptom spaces and other rooms that do not have active ventilation. And the plan also calls for recommendations using non-mechanical options, such as opening windows and doors when feasible. And I think the last item to highlight here would be that the plan notes that PPS will continually review available technology that's being developed for potential use. And that's something we do regularly. We're, we're constantly looking at new options, new technology, and new products that might be out there that can help. Thank you. Next slide, please.
Good evening, Director Sharon Race, Chief of HR. I can update you on our COVID-19 vaccine distribution. K-12 educators have been, and all staff and PPS educators, as well as our community partner staff, have been eligible for vaccines in sequenced what their, what our Oregon Health Authority is calling WAVES. So, we are in Wave Three of four WAVES. That means that about 5,500 of our staff and our community partner staffs have been invited to receive the COVID-19 vaccines through the OHA process that schedules inoculations at the Oregon Convention Center. Next slide. I'm going to turn this over to our Chief of Schools, Sean Bird.
All right, good evening, everyone. Tonight, I want to share with you our plans that will allow our students opportunities for connection, support, and also allow for options. And first, I want to talk about our plans that are already being executed, which is limited in-person instruction. So, as Superintendent Guerrero mentioned at the outset of our meeting, we have 15 schools that have now started limited in-person instruction. There are about 234 students that are attending Lippi this week. And 53.8% of those students identify as Black or Latino. And that's compared to 25.2% of district-wide statistic for those groups of students. So, just as a reminder, limited in-person instruction is targeted supports for students, either for curriculum instruction, for social-emotional learning. And we also have, in addition to these programs that are running, we have about 4,200 students who are engaged in athletic programs. And we just began inviting students back in our high schools to participate in visual and performing arts. So, for the next several weeks, more, more schools will be coming online. So, by March 1st, nearly every school in the district will offer some version of limited in-person instruction. Next slide, please. As we move from limited in-person instruction to a more, to a broader reopening of our schools, we want to talk about how, and how we can do that in a way that will support our students, both academically and from a social-emotional standpoint. So, we think about this, so we want to first acknowledge the hard work and dedication of our educators and our teachers. You cannot underestimate the amount of work that they put into their jobs every day, particularly those of our youngest stu, students. So, kindergarten teachers, first-grade teachers, who are able to keep the attention of students from distances is quite a remarkable challenge. And our teachers have really stepped up and done a great job. So, first, want to appreciate what they've done. And it's also a reason that we want to get our youngest students back into school, because we know those youngest learners will benefit from this live support of, of a teacher. So, we want to provide options for our families. We have two options that we want to discuss tonight. And the first one would be that students may remain in Conference of Distance Learning, which is what we know about now. It's a combination of live video conferencing and independent work. And then, we also want to talk tonight about Option B, which is the participation in a hybrid instructional model. And this would be, as the Superintendent mentioned earlier, an opportunity for students to return to schools live for an in-person for four days a week for 2 hours and 15 minutes each day. Students will still continue some distance learning activities when they're not live in school. And we want to show you some examples of how that could work tonight. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So we have looked at a variety of opportunities for this. And just a reminder that we continue to be in conversation with and collaboration with our teachers' union. And we will continue collaborating on what's the best possible option for families to choose. But tonight, what I'm presenting to you is a framework that we would like to start from. So again, four days of in-person instruction for 2 hours and 15 minutes per day. This provides predictability for families. It provides consistency for our students. And it provides us the opportunity to meet the logistical challenges of the social distancing requirements, as well as transportation needs of our students. You know, one of the most important things that we have tried to maintain throughout this pandemic is the connection to a teacher. We know from a lot of research that one of the primary drivers of success for schoolchildren is the connection to a caring adult. And so this model will allow our students, for the most part, to remain with their teachers, with few exceptions. Next slide. So I want to talk about a hybrid model in a couple of ways. I'm going to first have you think about a class of 26 students in a classroom. So we have 26 students in our classroom, and about 30% of them, we think, probably are not going to be able to come back right away. So that's eight students. So you have 18 students that you would need to see in person. There are a couple of ways that this can be accomplished right now that we're talking about. The first proposed model is a hybrid model with simulcast. And what that means is that there will be students in the classroom. So in this case, there could be 18 students in the classroom, divided into two groups. And eight students will be at home. So in one of those groups, an AM or PM group, which we'll show you an example of in a moment, eight of those students would be at home on the computer, and the teacher would be teaching from her classroom. Some students live and in person, and other students would be at home following on or participating from their home. The advantage of this, obviously, is they get to keep the connection to their teacher. They get to keep the connection to the classmates that they have gotten to know virtually all year long. And they're not missing out on instruction by going to another program, such as a virtual school. We want to be able to support teachers to do this through video equipment and other technology solutions. And we also realize that this may perhaps be an option for some of our older students as we go into middle and high school. So we want to continue to talk about this model. Another way to achieve the same goal is to have students come to school. Again, the same class, you have 26 students in your class, eight of them are going to participate and continue participating in the hybrid model, and the 18 that will come to school. So the teacher would have, perhaps the morning group would be the eight students at home that will continue to participate in CDL, just like they do today. So the teacher would teach the content that she's going to teach live in the afternoon. She would teach that on the computer to those eight students. And then the students that chose to come in person would come in the afternoon. We understand that in some of our buildings, we have some operational hurdles that we'll have to overcome, depending on how many students want to come back. But we believe that those are challenges that we are up to solving, and we're going to work hard to make that happen. Next slide, please. Just to make this come to life for you a little bit, I want you to meet our student Ayana. Yep, there she is. Ayana's parents have chosen for her to participate in the hybrid model. Next slide, please. So Ayana's, she's opted into the hybrid learning model. She's going to be assigned either to a morning or an afternoon group. In this case, Ayana's school has assigned her to a morning group. So she's going to, you can see her calendar there, her weekly calendar there. She's going to have in-person instruction Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. And we're really focusing on three distinct things here in in-person learning. So I told you at the beginning, we're focusing on, you know, connection and support, both academic and social-emotional. So we're going to spend some time in Ayana's class on social-emotional learning. We're going to spend some time on foundational literacy skills, and then some time in math, because those are, of course, building blocks to a successful education. And our youngest learners definitely need and can benefit from the in-person interaction with their teachers. On Wednesday, when Ayana's not in school, she'll be at home, and she'll have some opportunity, perhaps, to work in small groups with her teachers, as well as doing some asynchronous work or work that's not live in front of a teacher. She'll also still be familiar with some of the model, because distance learning will still be in place for her. After her in-person session in the morning, she's going to go home and still continue to participate in what she's very familiar with, which is our Conference of Distance Learning model for some of the content areas. If you go to the next slide, I'm going to show you a graphic of Ayana's daily day. So she'll get on the bus around 7:45. She'll be transported to school. And when she gets to school, she'll be met by school staff members, who will do a wellness check to make sure that she's feeling well. In this case, Ayana is feeling great. She is going to go to her classroom and settle in. You'll see there she's at her desk. She is modeling great coronavirus safety protocols by having her mask on. And she's going to get settled in with her other classmates. The classroom is going to look a little different than what we normally see in our kindergarten classrooms. There won't be, obviously, students sitting together on the carpet for storytime, because we need to keep social distancing. And, you know, there will be opportunities for teachers to still make that personal connection with students, but they will be socially distanced. Ayana will then, the class will get settled in, and they'll go through their day with social-emotional learning, starting off, checking in, making sure everybody's doing all right, followed by a math lesson, and then followed by foundational skills and literacy. Now, in this case, Ayana is a student who receives special education services. So she's going to, instead of getting her lunch at 10:45 and going home, she's actually going to stay at school for an extra 30 minutes. And this is another advantage of this hybrid model, because we can provide additional services to those students who need additional one-to-one services through either an IEP or for our English language learners. So Ayana will stay, she will have her additional services, and then she will get on the bus, and she'll go home. But her day is not over. Next slide. Because when she gets home, she'll have time to eat her lunch that she got before she left school. And then she's going to go into the familiar part of the routine for her. She'll have her specials classes, PE, art, and music. That will be online in a synchronous or asynchronous format. And she will continue to have some asynchronous learning with science, social studies, and health. And then at the end of the day, she'll have some time to catch up and reflect on the work that she did this morning in person. So perhaps her teacher wants her to read independently for 20 minutes, and so she'll do that, maybe write in her journal or reflection about her reading, practice some math problems, apply that learning. So she'll have some time at the end of the day to do that. So that is what it would look like for a student who is in the class. Now, if you're in the PM group, if Ayana was in the PM group, in the morning, she would do these activities that you're seeing here on the screen. This would just be flipped. She would have her breakfast, do her specials classes, and then she would go to school and do the same thing. Next slide. So I just want to talk about some of the operational considerations that we made when we're thinking about and talking about these plans with our labor partners. We need to have a gap in between the sessions in the morning and afternoon session. So you notice that one session started at 8:00 to 10:15, and the next sessions are about 12:30. And that's because we need to make sure that we have an opportunity for our custodial staff to sanitize the high-touch points in the building, such as doorknobs, rail, handrails, and bathrooms. And then we'll need to make sure our classrooms are able to, the teachers will supervise students wiping down the desk as they leave and making sure that those areas are clean and ready for the next group of students. We also need to give our teachers time to, you know, have their own lunch and have some planning time to work on lessons for students. You know, again, I just want to point out that the instructional model, this allows us to provide continuity of teaching and learning. We think it's really important that, if possible, students stay with their teachers, because they have spent the last several months in this very extraordinary circumstance getting to know their teachers and having, building a relationship. It allows us to provide some extended learning support for those students who need it most. And it allows also the social-emotional learning lessons to be live and in-person for days a week. In addition to our amazing teachers, we also have amazing counselors and social workers who'll be available for in-person support. So there are lots of reasons to bring back our students in person, even, you know, though we know that there are some challenges that we will work to solve. We know that the challenge of 2 hours and 15 minutes and what time of the day a student goes to school might provide some challenges for our families. And we are going to, we're going to send out a survey, which is going to be talked about in just a minute, to help understand what people's needs are. But we still think that even with hurdles that we might have to overcome, we still believe that these opportunities to allow our students this additional support and the additional opportunities to connect is worth the effort to solve the problems. Next slide, please. Now, I will turn it over to Chief Jonathan Garcia.
Thank you, Dr. Byrd. Good evening, board. As was mentioned earlier, a survey will be going out to all PPS kindergarten through fifth-grade families this Friday, where they will provide three specific things, or two specific things. They will provide a preferred option if they want to participate in hybrid learning the months of April, May, and June, or if they'd like to remain in online, online-only CDL throughout, through the rest of the year. In addition, we will be asking parents to share any additional student learning and support needs for their individual students. We are going to be requesting that families respond by February 22nd so that we can begin to really effectively plan and staff accordingly. And as was mentioned earlier or previously, middle school and high school families should be expecting an update soon as we are developing plans as we speak. Next slide. And so the goal of this, the expectation of this survey is that we reach 100% of our K-5 families. We really want to make sure that we understand and encourage all families to voice their preference for in-person instruction or distance learning. Of course, we encourage our families to make that decision with their students and encourage those conversations at home. We also know that relational engagement is going to be really critical at this juncture. And so the survey will originate from schools and most likely from school principals. So we are building on that relational trust between the schools and the families that they serve. In addition, we are working internally to coordinate central office support staff and school-based staff to ensure that the survey gets completed 100%. So we'll be providing some trainings and making sure that we're making phone calls and ensuring that we're crossing off every person that we serve in our district that is in the K-5, that are K-5 families. And so we'll be doing that regarding this survey, which, again, will go out Friday. In addition to that, the Office of Engagement and, in partnership with many other departments, continue to engage Black, Native, and communities of color. And we will do so this month as well, to really hear their thoughts and their feedback and their preference for how we should improve the CDL experience and how we should continue refining any in-person experience that students would be a part of. Next slide. Turn it over to Dr. Brown.
Thank you. And at this point, we'll be happy to take questions.
Dr. Bailey, go ahead.
Yeah, my first question is for Sean. You had the two hybrid models, one with the simulcast and one not. And I was a little confused with the non-simulcast model, where if you have 26 kids, eight, on average, we think, would be CDL staying at home, and 18 coming to school. It sounded like all 18 coming at once.
Yeah, so, yeah, and those are some of the logistical.
Overtax.
Yeah, so definitely, those are some of the logistical operations that we'll have to work out. That, in that case, it could be, there could be a school, you know, there could be an example where we have three teachers at a school. And there's some number of them that want to remain in CDL and some number that want to come to school. So in that case, we would have to probably make a couple of teacher changes and have one teacher be the CDL teacher, and then the other two do the in-person and divide the ones that could come in. We also could look at our space utilization in schools and see, you know, we have to move some classrooms from the classroom that they're assigned to to other spaces in the building. These are all conversations that we're having. I think, you know, the simulcast model and the other option of that both have their pros and cons. And, you know, we will work with our educators to solve for these operational issues that we have.
Dr. Byrd, I had a question on the same lines, and that was how you came up with the numbers that went into the, the assumption that went into the model in terms of the eight students versus the 18. Are you using, like, national data, or how are you coming up with those assumptions?
I will defer to Dr. Brown, who, we've talked about 30% is kind of a starting point for families that may want to stay home, but I'll defer to him.
Yeah, and systems around the country, we've seen that roughly 30% on average have been staying in CDL. That being said, this community has been much more conservative about leaning into the health metrics and behaviorally than other communities. So I actually suspect that 30% may be an underestimate of the proportion of folks who want to stay at home. It's why it's critical that we find out from our families their choice. You know, what do they really want to happen for each of their students? You know, I've related before, you know, for my three kids, two of them, I would have wanted them to go back to in-person instruction, and one, I would have wanted to keep home, because I think he would have done better in CDL. And in fact, that's how he finished high school, was something akin to CDL. So we really want to afford families that sort of choice. And then, once we have that information back from our families, that's why it's so critical that we hear for each student that family's choice, then we can really model this out very tightly.
Thank you.
Dr. Brown, can you talk a little bit about the time, the sort of the two and a half hours? Is that part of the state guidelines in terms of limiting the time that students can be in hybrid?
Actually, Dr. Byrd, I think would be the better.
No, that's more of a function of, we need to have time to clean the buildings, and we also need to have time to transport students back and forth. The two hours that you're referring to as in limited in-person instruction, that is a limit of two hours, because it can only supplement Conference of Distance Learning, it can't take the place of. So once we go into a hybrid model, that will be the educational model. And we've looked at times, and especially as we include middle school and high school, the transportation, the logistics of that become very challenging because of the social distancing on buses. So we had to have some room in there for drivers to refuel buses, to take their own breaks and things like that. So that's where the 2 hours and 15 comes from.
Okay, and sort of related, I'm sorry, just related on that, you know, you mentioned the 100 per week. My understanding is that that doesn't include transportation or passing in the hallway. It's just sort of limited to scheduled classes. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Yep.
So that potentially will make it easier. I know you're still working through logistics of, say, like a middle and high school, but potentially that clarification from OD might make it a little bit easier.
Yes, it does. But I think, I think you, yes, we're working on some different proposals. I think in a high school, it becomes challenging, because students are in so many different configurations of classes. And so a student in band, for example, that could be 75 students right there if the ensemble was together. And then you have your other classes. Now, the four-by-four schedule does make it a little easier to solve. So we'll be putting some proposals forward soon to share with you some of our thinking on how we could do that. And some things may stay in distance learning and others in person. So we're working on through some of those issues now.
And Dr. Byrd, is it safe to say that the main constraint on time with the K-5 model is that we are using a model where the kids keep their same teacher? And they have their same teacher all day? And if you had kids at school longer, then you'd have to switch it up and move kids to different teachers, right? Just keeping the length of the workday and the transportation in between home and remote.
Couple of things, because our teachers are still, remember, they're teaching in person, but they're also still responsible for, you know, planning for those asynchronous lessons. So there's the time that we have to give them to plan their lessons. There's also the, yes, it is our value to keep students with their teacher as much as possible. So there are a couple of reasons, and then we have to, you know, divide the groups into reasonable, you know, sections. So 2 hours and 15 minutes is the best in-person we could do. And also, if you think about kindergarten students, you know, it's going you know, it it's going to be different than what we would see in a normal kindergarten class. So students will be masked, they'll be coming in, they'll be sitting socially distanced. There there's some classroom management aspects of that, too, that it's certainly not, we certainly don't want to are not going to expect kindergartners to sit still on their desk for two and a half, two hours and 15 minutes. There'll be some opportunities for them to move, but we do have to control that as much as possible. So, you know, there's several factors that go into the, to limiting the time. But we think it's important that they have an opportunity to be with the teacher for those critical literacy, math, and social emotional learning aspects of the day.
All right, let's have Constan go next.
I have a question about, I have a few questions, but I have a question about Lippi. So right now, you know, we have really just a handful of students. We have less than 1% of our students. But when you say that by March 1st, we're going to have Lippi available in every one of our buildings, is there a maximum capacity there for a number of students? Or what do you imagine will be the maximum number of students in Lippi once every building is up and going?
Yeah, so it's limited again because limited in-person instruction is must not take the place of comprehensive distance learning. So by its very nature, it's supposed to be supplemental. So there are different kinds of activities that can happen. There are schools that want to do some academic things as well as clubs and activities. So they'll have students on campus for different things. I think as more teachers receive vaccinations, we'll have more teachers that are able to participate, interested in participating. So some schools have right now, very small, you know, they're starting with 10, 15 students. Some are up to 40 students at a time. So it really depends on, it depends on a couple of things. It depends on what what need are we trying to meet? Is it a social emotional need? Is it an academic need? And but the the overarching goal of limited in-person instruction is a very targeted need. So it's not really, it's not really supposed to be wide-scale reopening. In terms of, you know, as plans come in, we can, we can see what the numbers are, but they're averaging right now about 40. I mean, 20 to 20 to 40 students are what is happening. So if you just do that across the school, they may increase again with teachers becoming vaccinated, we may have more. I've talked to principals that have said, I have more teachers that want to participate once they receive the vaccine.
All right, I know that I'm just going through to make sure everyone gets a chance to ask an initial question. I think we've got Rita, Julia, and me. So Rita, did you have a question?
Rita, you're muted.
How's that? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so it's just some logistical questions. So in terms of the vaccinations, what are you hearing about the availability of slots? And do we have any sense of how many of our teachers have actually been able to get shots at this point?
We have very limited information about the availability of vaccines. It's our, we don't know who has gotten a shot and who has not gotten a shot. That information just isn't accessible to employers. Dr. Moore, so with regard to how many have been been available, initially, there were about 2,000 vaccinations happening each day at the Oregon Convention Center. Of course, that's expanded in terms of who has become eligible to receive vaccines. And the latest number I heard for wave three was that there were 800 to 900 vaccines available for that group of educators. And we expect more to open up here later this week.
So is that considered, is is whether or not somebody actually got vaccinated, is that considered privileged info? Is that private?
It is not accessible to us. I I believe that our healthcare providers consider that confidential information. However, I do know that it is tracked by the Oregon Health Authority.
Okay, but but as an employer, it's it's not likely that you would be able to know. I mean, you're not going to have like a
I don't.
An estimate of the percentage of teachers who have been successfully vaccinated or not.
We don't have, we don't currently have a path to knowing that information.
Okay. Okay.
Just to build off of that, have we asked, I mean, it seems, it seems like if we've prioritized that, the governor's prioritized it. If there's not enough slots and people aren't getting in, it seems like we want to, we'd want to know that if we're moving ahead with opening schools. It seems like we'd want to advocate if our teachers aren't getting and school staff and the tuition service workers and the bus drivers aren't getting them that if before we open schools, that we want to be able to ensure that that happens. So I'm kind of curious, it seems like a passive position for us to to take.
Well, we would have to ask our employees. And there are, I think, many reasons for vaccine hesitancy. Our focus has been on education regarding the efficacy and the safety around the vaccine. We have not taken a position that we want our employees at this point in time to report. I would also point out that the information we are receiving from the CDC, the Oregon Health Authority, and the American Academy of Pediatrics isn't basing their recommendations about where and when it's safe to reopen on vaccines. They're basing it on a multiple, multiple layers of mitigation efforts like social distancing, limited capacity, hand washing, et cetera.
Yeah, I guess I'm the point I'm trying to ask is not about like understanding whether people like proving they've been vaccinated or not, but more in this, in the spirit of if somebody wanted a vaccine and they were one of the people who called and couldn't get an appointment that we, you know, and they wanted one that we'd want to advocate for them to get them. And it just seems like that would be something we'd have a if you're, if you've been unable to get a vaccine and we're asking you to show up for school, like let us know so we could help you get one versus like this is some sort of like compliance reporting mechanism, but it it seems passive for the district to if if that's, because what I've heard from, say, the Portland Association of Teachers is that's a requirement for them to come back. And it seems like if we can't, if we can't get them, if they're not able to get it scheduled or for whatever reason, because there is a shortage of supply, it seems like we'd want to know that to help facilitate it, whether it's CDC guidance or not.
Well, I I can clarify and ask additional questions regarding that. But it's my understanding that we've reached wave two because there have been sufficient vaccination spots in waves one and two, and that it is a, it is a matter of time over the course of the next several weeks to get through to finish waves three and get into wave four.
I would just add, Director Brim Edwards, that the, that we are interested in getting information about vaccines, but going through the channels through Multnomah County's Public Health Department. So if you'll recall it, I don't know if you remember when Public Health Director Gurnsey was here and she talked about the sort of data that they have available. I know that they're in development of of developing a vaccine dashboard that they've offered to share with us once it's it's fully developed and embedded there. So we'll, we'll, we'll be able to give you some of that information.
Thank you. And I guess I'm concerned because it seems like that's a threshold requirement that some people have to go back in. And if we're making plans that and we're telling families that this is going to be an option, and yet we don't have any idea whether or not actually people have been able to to access the vaccine, it it seems like we may be promising something to students and families that we can't actually deliver on. And we'd want to take a more advocacy role because like if, if, in fact, the governor has prioritized s- school staff, then and it's not happening, and that's a requirement to get it back to either hybrid or, you know, more extensive Lippi that we would want to know that and be able to advocate for that.
So the the vaccines have been moving along with rapid speed up until about this late last week. So we, I think there's an underlying assumption here about how quickly they are moving. So I think we need to get some additional information about what that looks like. Because it is my understanding that waves one and two have been able to get vaccines. So we're really looking at waves three and four. So why don't we get some more information and and come back to what is the, what is the timeline there? What we know is that the vaccine supply has not been something that we have been able to adequately forecast, or our state partners have not been able to accurately forecast.
So I'll tell you what what I'm looking for. It does not inspire confidence when the director of OHA predicts that the the rollout is going to be a mess. It would, it would be nice to get some reassurance if it's not a mess. That would be good to know. That would make me feel better. On many levels, that would make me feel better.
So maybe if we don't want to ask staff if they got vaccinated or not, but maybe we can ask at an appropriate point, and it's probably not yet. Is there anybody who wanted to get vaccinated who hasn't been able to as a, as a gauge? And that would not violate any privacy. And that may be, that may help us if there is any hangup, help us advocate further.
I think as we go a few more weeks into this process, that the state is going to be able to provide us with additional information as Danny Ledesma just spoke to with her, our county health provider, that we will, at Health Department, we we are going to have some additional information within a, within a few weeks.
So I have, oh, I was going to say, have a question about can we voluntarily survey staff? And rather than getting 100% response rate, take the response weight, the response rate that we do get and extrapolate that to the total population to get a sense, you know, within a, I don't know, two or three standard deviations or something, just to give us an idea of what the percentage we're talking about of people that have been vaccinated.
I think even asking becomes an issue around people's health privacy stuff. But I think that's a good, a good suggestion for Sharon to kind of take under advisement. I haven't had a chance to ask my question yet, which is about the the high school and middle school. And I said, I know you said that there would be more information coming, but I know we have a lot of, we have both students who are thriving in CDL in high school and some who are really missing some of those interactions. And I'm wondering how Lippi will intersect with things like leadership classes? Or I know from my community, there's a lot of students who had sort of hopes for their senior year of of their leadership class or some of the ways they give back and serve the community. That's part of kind of traditions for seniors especially. And also thinking about those students who, there's a lot of tradition in high school, right, especially for our seniors? And what ways we're thinking about preserving some of that for students in the second semester? Ways that they can come together, ways that they can sort of put a capstone on their career and engage with and invest and sort of thank their communities.
Yes, thank you for that question. So actually, I just spoke with Alyssa Short, who's director for high schools. And we were talking today about what kinds of things we can do to make the end of, particularly the senior year, a special event. And so I would say through limited in-person, some of that can happen. Some schools are planning limited in-person events that are both academic and social. So obviously with that, again, as I mentioned at the beginning, we have about 4,200 students, all high school students that are student athletes that are able to participate. We're bringing more and more students with visual and performing arts, so that's another opportunity. So as many opportunities as we can for our high school and middle school students, we will be opening up Lippi. Those schools are still developing plans, but again, there are definitely senior traditions and those things that we know are important to to students, so we want to give them as much as as we can. But I don't want to overpromise something that we can't deliver on right now, so we're in discussions about how to make that happen for students.
All right, Director Bailey, I think you asked the first question in this round. Do you have another question?
Yeah, for Jonathan. There's kind of been the implication by some of the public that we haven't reached out to our African-American families, native families, families of color. Could you tell us what's happened so far? And then that survey looks to be, I know you want to be comprehensive and then do, it sounded like also some kind of targeted outreach as well. Could you expand on that?
Thank you for the question. Sorry, my internet might be a little bit slow. I think the question was previous engagement and then looking forward to to this one. So in terms of previous engagement, I think we've done over the course of this school year, a number of things. One, we've done a survey that we did at the beginning of the year that went out to all families. In addition to that, we've been working very closely with our cultural partner to get real insight. Our cultural partners and our community-based nonprofits are accountable to the community. That is the premise of our CBO, our culturally specific organization. And so we really rely on on their input, their insight and their thoughts station around how we we think schools and comprehensive distance learning. And in addition, have
Anybody else having trouble? Yeah, okay.
I'm also having, yes, I'm having trouble hearing.
Maybe I can try to channel Jonathan and we can kind of go from there. He can, he can move his lips and I can be the sound. I think.
Or can he also maybe take the video off to increase the speed?
Oh, yeah. Jonathan, do you want to try that?
I think he's gone. I think he's not reading any.
Why don't I just jump in really quickly? So as Jonathan, as Jonathan mentioned, I think like, like you all have heard, engaging our families and students has been the utmost important throughout this entire process, particularly families of color. We've engaged them in several different ways and and like, like we heard in the proclamation today, there are some places where we have done really great and some places where we're going to continue to learn and improve. Jonathan mentioned that at the beginning of the year, we did survey all of our families and students. We've done some follow-ups with those surveys. We've also engaged in in sort of targeted focus groups of where we wanted to talk to not only parents and fam- and parents and families, but also students. So we've done some really sort of focused, focused groups, if you will. And then, as Jonathan mentioned, we do have a pretty extensive network of culturally specific providers who are not only telling us about their experiences with 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 schools and the the ways in which they work with the students, but also their staff and their families that are, that they're employing. And so we've gotten quite a bit of feedback. And, you know, we've also had the, we we can also see where there's really strong relationships between school staff and parents and families. So we've heard feedback from teachers, from principals, from counselors, from social workers who are also bringing up the, 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 the input that they've received and sort of have 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 cycled that through our planning as well. As you've heard before, we've tried to have really robust planning process so that ultimately, when we think about returning back to in-person, we're really taking into account the multiple needs of our students, the individualized needs of students and families, and providing a range of options to be able to to support those needs.
I think, and as we've talked about going to a hybrid model, I think one of the important features of that is the flexibility and allowing, we know some of our intergenerational families might not want to join in right away until their elders get vaccinated and then they might be more comfortable coming in. And that's, I appreciate that flexibility being built in from the get-go. So I'll stop there and let somebody else ask.
And thank you, Danny. My internet went out. That was the perfect answer.
Other questions from the board? Other questions from the board?
Well, can I just note that this is an example of why we need more reliable, better, high-speed internet access all over Mountain County? Just saying.
I saved that for the, the committee this week.
Yeah, so Thursday.
There we go.
Cheryl, Larry, I.
Thank you. I have actually a quick question and then, and then a statement. And I want to get back to the middle school, high school question because I know we're going to have, so first actually let me thank you for this information. It was a very clear presentation and, and I think, you know, you've done a lot to, for K through five, to figure out a model that is going to allow some of that flexibility and keep it with their teachers. And so I, I just appreciate this. We're going to have a lot of questions from middle school and high school families. And I, I want to respect the fact that it is, it is harder under these state guidelines, you know, to see if we can make that work. And I know you staff are working really, really hard to do that. Can you give a little bit more sense of timeline? And, and I guess both, both in terms of when those families will hear something. And I also, I'm going to make this assumption, be tell me if I'm right, that we are not, the fact that we have, that we're not rolling something out this week does not mean we're pushing off the potential move towards hybrid for middle school and high school. It just means we want to be clear about the plan before we start rolling out information that might change. Is that accurate?
That's, that's correct, Director Scott. And we are, we have draft plans that we're working on. We'll be in conversation with our labor partners about those as, as well. And, you know, we're getting feedback from, from people about those plans, but that does not mean that they'll start later, you know. We're not going to push the start of those. It's just that we, we'll also have an opportunity to survey the community of those middle school and high school parents about their desires and, and needs. We want to provide a framework and we'll, we'll be, we're getting closer to, to being able to provide that. So all I can say is stay tuned. It's going to be soon.
Thanks. And then just really quickly, Chair Lowry, I just, I, you know, I want to, I'm going to sort of just address this, this larger issue, right? And, and I think the reality is that our community is split and Superintendent Guerrero said that earlier today. I think all of us are receiving lots and lots of communication from people who have very, very different viewpoints. And I think it's really important that all of us take the time to try and understand where everyone else is coming from. I will tell you that I, I have become convinced through, through what I've seen from CDC and other places, that there are ways to open schools safely. And I think given the cost to our children of, of, of being out and, and CDL, we, we need to move rapidly towards that. I will also say I'm getting a lot of communication from teachers, from families, from community members who are uncomfortable with that. And, and, and what I'm trying to do personally is just understand, you know, the viewpoint, what, what is that, that is making them feel unsafe? You know, at the same time, there are, there are families that are really suffering and children who are suffering in, in distance learning. And I think it's really important that we understand what they're going through and why it is so important to their families to want to come back. And so I would just say, I mean, in the end, we are, we are one school district, we are one community. There will not be a successful reopening of schools if our teachers don't feel safe. There will not be a successful reopening of schools if our families don't feel safe. And there will not be a successful reopening of schools if we do something wrong, right? And, and, and we don't get these mitigation measures, you know, in, in place and appropriate. So, so I just want to thank the staff. You guys have been working for a year really, really hard to, to make this work. And I know from a community perspective, it often feels very frustrating. Why aren't we moving more quickly? You know, and I get a lot of questions and, and I won't ask it today, but you know, I, we, I know you are looking at what other districts are doing and, you know, the fact that, you know, Ben is moving towards, you know, opening in schools and high schools. And some of our, our local private high schools are opening as well. And, and I know we are looking at those as models and trying to see what they're doing and how they're fitting within those state guidelines. But also making sure we're understanding again, what those, what those concerns that the community members have are, and, and that's going to make the most successful end of this school year and then really prepare us well for starting in the fall.
Amy?
So this kind of Andrew teed me up perfectly. Going off of those sentiments, my question was probably to Dr. Byrd. Are we giving any consideration to moving up hy- the hybrid opportunity? Because it is a pretty long runway. I mean, we're, it's almost two months from now. And at that point, and, and it's been made pretty clear that our limited in-person instruction is very limited. So the vast majority of our students will be in CDL for the next two months. And at that point, I think it's fairly safe to say that we'll be getting close to being a national outlier in terms of the number of kids that we have in any kind of in-person instruction. So, you know, all, we heard from Dan Young tonight that all of our buildings are prepared. So we have made the, we, I think we hear from our community sometimes that they think that the district is hung up because we haven't done the facilities work that we need to do to return safely. But I think we, we've seen and heard that, that that work has been done. So are we looking at opportunities to move up hybrid at least for K five?
Yeah. So I would say that first of all, our, I had to give a shout out to our ops team who've been for months working in our buildings to rearrange, take furniture out and rearrange furniture and put directional signers down. And so they've been doing that for months. So those are, those are ready to go. Yes, I think that depending upon the vaccination rollout, you know, the, as Sharon mentioned, it's in waves. So right now invitations have gone through K through eight teachers. I believe that's wave three is six through eight. So, you know, as, as we make progress towards vaccination, of course, we are still in collaboration and conversation with our teachers union, but it, there is a, there is a world in which maybe K, we have a slow roll where we start, you know, K one, then two, you know, there, there is a, there's a, a world where that could happen. It's 59 days until April the eighth. So, you know, we, we know that time is of the essence and we know that, but we want to do this right and we want to make sure that we are, that our teachers feel comfortable and that, you know, we know our buildings are set up so that this is successful for students. So I would say stay tuned for that too.
Michelle, Rita or Julia, do you have another question to ask?
I do. I'll follow one of them if they want to go.
We'll just have you go, Julia.
Rita, do you want to go?
Well, I had a question about testing. I, I know the prospects are not good for the level of testing that we really ought to be doing, not just locally, but nationally. And, you know, I've seen, I've seen the research saying that school outbreaks are not necessarily common, but they're also not unknown. Are, are we looking at any alternative methodologies like batch testing or, I'll say it again, waste management testing? I mean, is there, is there any, is there any hope on the horizon that the testing situation is going to improve anytime soon?
So we've had some information come forward regarding testing. Again, the testing model that's being proposed by the state at this point in time is aimed at symptomatic students. And the primary benefit for that is in terms of determining how long a, a student would need to stay at home for quarantine purposes.
But, but there's a flaw with that. I mean, if we're talking about K fives, assuming that it still holds that kids tend to, even when they're affected, they tend to be asymptomatic. I mean, that criterion seems to be a, a little flawed.
I, I understand. I'm describing the, the system that's put in, in place. And ag- agreed, I think, a more robust model that involves testing asymptomatic students and doing it in, in a manner akin to say what we saw in New York City would be a broader model. I do believe we also, we heard you the last time with the question about wastewater. And, and I think we're, we have been following up to, to find out where we're, or what options we may have around that as well. Because again, some folks have been using that as a successful way to, to understand whether or not something's bubbling up outside of awareness. So.
Thank you.
All right, Julia and then Nathaniel?
Yeah. Well, first off, before I get to my question, I just want to acknowledge that I really appreciate the detailed planning that's gone and, and care that's gone into the planning. As been noted, we have, well, I think there's a whole range of viewpoints on returning, but we certainly have those who want to continue in comprehensive distance learning and, and a group that wants to, definitely wants to have their kids back in school, our kids want to be back in school. And then there's a spectrum of in-between. And I think, you know, it's a monumental epic task that hopefully we'll never have to do again. And I think that considering the circumstances, staff has really done a, a good job at trying to address both of those needs. And I guess I also want to just reflect on the comment, like, are we going to be last? You know, sometimes there's benefits to not being an early adopter. And like, you know, I think there's definitely cases, times when I love being the early adopter, really pushing the boundaries, like reaching, getting newer learnings. You know, I think in this case, whether we want to be the later adopters or not, there, we're definitely going to benefit from learnings from other districts, whether it's, you know, there's large districts open, reopening all across the country, New York, Chicago. You know, just pretty much in every, in every state. So I think where earlier it was, there's not very many to learn from. That's not the case now. So I'm hoping we're sort of uptaking the learnings. And again, I think the initial planning that's been done really addresses both learning styles and needs of our broader community. And I hope that it is, you know, gradually moves to in-person. Because I, e- even those who for safety and health reasons want to stay in comprehensive distance learning, I've yet to really have anybody believe in their hearts that that's the best way. There's nothing like the magic of a, a teacher and a student in a classroom together. So thanks to staff for that. I think my questions that I would have are sort of a little bit somewhat in technical nature about, you know, if we have a lopsided response. So we're, we're banking our strategy on students having, not having to change teachers. But that's also depending on having like a nice split in a classroom of getting this, you know, part of the students want to do, you know, comprehensive distance learning and the other part want to have in-person and it all sorts of works out. But I, I anticipate that we'll have schools in which it won't, won't be that. So one question I would have is whether if we get results that don't lead to fitting into the model we have with the safe guidelines, what do we do about that? That's one question. And then just go back to the vaccines. The currently, we have a long history of requiring students to disclose whether they've been vaccinated. And it's not necessarily for the students, but also for the larger population of safety. So I'm curious about why there would be a different standard in this particular case. You know, I, I think we, as, as a community, we're going to need to know whether people have been vaccinated and whether it is safe to change some of our health protocols. So I'm not understanding why things would be different when, for our students and for, for our staff. And, but I, but I would start with a question that Director Bailey posed, because I think that's probably the best one, which is there, if there anybody who wanted to get one, they didn't get, get one, and how can we help facilitate that? So those are, those are my two questions. One, about why is there a different standard for students than we'd have for staff? And then what if we have more students asking for hybrid? Or in-person versus CDL? And how would we balance that and still have within a school that workout?
So in terms of, yeah, the math is probably not likely to work out exactly like we would like it to. But we, we are going to, you know, we're surveying our parents, one thing to see, what is your, what are your top priorities? Is it very important that you stay with your teacher? And so we want to ask those kinds of questions. We hope that we can take care of it within a building. I mean, we will be able to take care of it within a building. So it may require some students changing teachers if there are an inordinate amount of students that want to participate in distance learning. We may have to, we may have to split the groups up a little bit to make it work for space considerations. But we are committed to, to trying to keep students with their teacher as much as possible, because we think that's important. Particularly since they have spent all this time building a relationship with that teacher for the last quarter of the year. We want to make sure that, to the extent we can, we want to keep them with their teacher. But we do know that, that may not be possible in 100% of the, of the cases. So we'll wait and see what we get back with the data and then we'll come back. And if we, you know, that's why we're also in continuing conversations with me to make some modifications to how this, how this works out. And then I'll turn it over to Sharon Reese for the other question.
Sure. I mean, one of the considerations is that the vaccines have been authorized under the emergency use authorization. They are not like other vaccines too, that have had longer clinical trials and a different approval process. So that's one of the considerations. Another consideration that we need to consider is going back to the, that vaccine hesitancy and the reasons for that, right? There's some pretty significant and brittle racism in the medical care field. And what we know is that vaccine hesitancy is highest among our communities of color. And so when we talk about what are, what sort of information, medical information, are we going to ask our staff to provide to us? We need to take those things into consideration. The approval of the vaccine, what is the racial equity lens that we would apply to that? And the, and the working conditions that we're asking people and to function in. Is there a value in getting that information? Absolutely. Are there additional considerations that we need to take into account in making decisions about that? Absolutely. And I want to share a story to make that a little more real, which is we have a member of our vaccine team who has healthcare training experience and background and who is a woman of color who shared with the vaccine team her own hesitancy about getting the vaccine and why. And, and she expressed her, her embarrassment with regard to sharing that with us. And I just want to be cognizant of all of those factors when we talk about asking employees to provide health information. Because it's, it's, it's multi, it's multi-layered.
Thank you for providing that. Ms. Reese, I, I want to echo the, the communities of color for a very good reason to have distrust of the medical system. I have stories too. I won't share here now, but I feel like this is an opportunity for us to, to do one better and to actually distribute, you know, truthful information to communities of color in ways that, that will be well received. I think we should look at who's sharing the information. And if we're sharing data, which for some communities doesn't mean much versus stories. And so really like this is an opportunity for us to deliver something culturally appropriate ways and to think about who has the expertise on the team to do that. And perhaps consider doing a race matching, which can be effective in terms of research projects, getting, getting, trusting, putting a principal investigator with someone that's reflective of the community that they're asking and, and serving and to deliver the information. Just a thought.
Great. Julia, did you get both of your questions answered there? Julia, you're muted.
Is someone playing the recorder?
That is Paige practicing the clarinet. So that is my daughter who is a sophomore at Cleveland practicing clarinet. So that is, and she's in the room next door to me because I had to move my office since my father-in-law is now living with us. So. Roseanne especially likes it during our meetings when Paige plays clarinet.
The good thing is that she's practicing. A music teacher would love that without being asked.
She's very dedicated to her clarinet. It's a, it's a wonderful thing to see. All right, Julia, did you get both of your questions asked?
I'll, I'll take it offline because I have a number of tiered questions, just because there's all sorts of policies about, you know, when people go back about that other people, because the vaccine also is about protecting the larger community. And when we don't, if, if we have unvaccinated people, for whatever reason, in our ecosystems, that has, that has implications for parents and grandparents who come drop off kids or, you know, whatever we're doing. So I, I'll take it offline, but I definitely have some more questions about that.
Great, thank you. Nathaniel, I know you haven't had an opportunity to ask any questions yet, and I'm assuming you might have some. So what would you like to, to bring forward tonight?
Yeah, so I got two questions. The first is, one common concern that we saw in the qualitative responses to our survey concerned student adherence to guidelines. That is to say, students who are concerned that their fellow students would not follow the rules that are in place to protect their health from breaking social distancing guidelines to removing masks. And at 1,208 total survey responses, 12.3% expressed that worry. So what I'm wondering is, what are we planning to do to combat this potential issue?
Well, that's certainly important, that students follow the guidelines. And, you know, the good part about this is that we have two options. We have comprehensive distance learning, and we have hybrid instruction. So we're going to require students and anyone entering our buildings to follow the masking requirements and social distancing requirements. And we want to do a good job educating people that there's a reason for that, and help them understand why they need to do that, and work with them. But it's not a, it's, but, you know, we will have to talk to people if they cannot follow those guidelines. And, and we may have to, you know, talk about what the other choices are in terms of comprehensive distance learning. But we, you know, we want to believe that if people understand the reasons why they have to do something, that they'll do it, especially our high school students who are young adults. And, you know, I, I believe that, you know, given the reasoning for things, then, then we can help them make better choices for the protection of themselves and others. Because as we all know, masks not only protect you, but protect the people around you. And that will be a requirement if you're going to be in our buildings to comply with those safety measures.
I, I think a lot of what the respondents expressed, the concern that they expressed, was that even if we explain the necessity as thoroughly as possible, there will, there is going to be a small minority of students who still don't care, who just disregard the guidelines, do whatever they feel like. And that, that puts everyone at risk. So, I mean, what happens if we have that scenario? What do we do to keep everyone safe?
So then our, you know, our teachers and administrators will be able to have conversations with those parents, of those students who are not able to comply with those rules. And, and we would then, you know, ask them to participate in a comprehensive distance learning. It became a habitual problem hypothetically. It became, this became a constant concern that somebody was not following the rules. Just like, you know, in, in society, if you refuse to wear your mask on an airplane, you don't get to fly that airline anymore. And so there are consequences to not following, not following the rules. And this is a health matter, so we'll take that very seriously.
All right, is there anything else we really need to ask in this moment before we move on to our policies? Nathaniel, did you have a second question? Sorry, okay, go ahead.
Yeah. And this, this might be a better question for our health advisory panel, but I figured I might as well ask at the moment. So a while back, we were shown modeling from the OHSU COVID forecast that predicted that we'd have a significant resurgence in cases. And that, that, that would be underway now. Now, this hasn't been the case. In fact, quite the opposite has happened. So I'm wondering, since it's, the case rate is so important to what we're doing with regard to reopening, why was the model wrong?
So we get updates from Dr. Graven every week where he talks about this. And I, one of the things that, if you recall back to him speaking about that, he, he talked about fatigue cycles. And so fear and fatigue. And there was a lot of apprehension around the holidays. And frankly, folks in Multnomah County and the Portland area stayed home more, more, more than not. They, they followed guidance, guidance on that. As I said earlier, we've actually seen, I think, greater compliance with health and safety guidance in this community than other communities. And for those of you who watched the, the after effects of the, the Super Bowl in Tampa, it was not pretty, what people were doing there. And it was vastly different than what you would see in, in this community. And so Dr. Graven said that, you know, this past week, that, that the fatigue cycle hasn't kicked in quite, quite as early. And now it's really a race, frankly, between the, the new variants that are in this country at this time and the rollout of the vaccines. And so we do anticipate that we may see an additional bump later. But the longer we delay it by following the guidelines in this community, the longer we keep our hospitalization rates low, the more we'll be able to absorb that bump without necessarily having adverse impact. It's something that we continue to look at, and, and something we revisit every week. And I think if you recall, and, and I, I so identify with this when I've modeled things, sometimes you want to be wrong. And, and Dr. Graven leaned into that early on and said, this is something I hope I'm wrong about. And again, I think we see that folks here are following that guidance a little bit better than, than other parts of the country. Our numbers are very low right now. That 13 cases a day is, is a very low rate. We, we have substantially reduced the, the rate at this point in time. And that gives us some cushion to, to, to absorb a bump if it, it comes. But again, we have been guided by the health guidance and the metrics, and we will continue to be so as we move forward.
All right, go ahead.
I, I know staff has been taking notes. And as you can see, this is, this continues to be iterative. I just want to underline, we look forward to hearing from 100% of our elementary families to, to do sort of a next stage of accurate planning, knowing what their choice is or their preference. I think everybody realizes there's differences of opinion, and all we're trying to do here is, is to meet that need. I'll underline again, we're hoping to continue discussing and, and arriving at agreements with, with our teachers' union to, to make sure that we, we can offer a hybrid option, hopefully on a more accelerated timeline, if, if possible, that, that's sort of a gradual rolling return, starting with our youngest, which I think coincides with the early waves of, of, of vaccines being made available. So they will have had their second dose sooner than, than others. And, and then I'd be remiss if, if I didn't sort of also stress, and this has been a learning experience for all of us at every level, not just for school district leaders and others. The governor's team has made herself, has made them regularly available to us. You should know, I have the opportunity to meet with them on a weekly basis. They make themselves available for, for questions. I have to say the same thing about our cooperation and collaboration with county leadership. We have another meeting again this Friday morning with local superintendents in the region, as well as local public health as well. Of course, my colleagues and all the folks at ODE, who also have learned to sort of make adjustments and iterate their guidance, much of, some of which is still mandatory. Guidelines continue to shift a little bit. We're expecting maybe some fine tuning that will happen for athletics this week later. So, so, so this has continued to be fluid. And this is our best attempt to date, at, at try to offering options for, for how we move forward, hopefully sooner rather than later. Our, our only goal is to continue to sort of be in there. We, we have been rather proactive, but can't control for what number of vaccines come to the state of Oregon. But everyone who, who we're hoping to have back on campus will have had access and opportunity to those doses, and, and we'll keep rolling those out. There were some questions around testing. I'm just checking my notes here. For, for those that are interested, we'll forward to the board sort of 15-page guidance that district leadership has, has been issued by OHA around when and how come, and how do you go about it, and when's it required? For those that, that are curious to hear more about that, I know that vaccine dashboards will also be made available more broadly to the public. I invite folks to oregon.gov. There's already existing pretty specific and disaggregated bar graphs about vaccine doses and who's receiving them already. Those are pretty up to date across the state. So I, I think what you see is the apparatus globally at all levels getting increasingly sort of more specific and knowledgeable about everything that, that we're contending with. So it, it has taken sort of partnership with all of our stakeholders. And I also want to just shout out there to our community-based organizations, our culturally-specific partners, who also serve our students, who are also slated to be in line to provide their support services in person. And so that's also another important element of, of our reentry into school. So thank you for your questions. Hopefully, what you heard from staff tonight is, is a balancing act here to try to serve a diversity of opinions and preferences by our families. We're going to keep working at trying to meet that need. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Let's go ahead and take a five-minute break and come back at 9:15 for us to focus on our policy work. Thanks, everyone. Call everyone back so we can move ahead on the last couple of items that are ahead of us for business tonight. We get to look at some exciting policies. So I, let's see, I'm trying to find my place in the script all of a sudden. I turn this over to Director Moore, who is the Chair of the Policy Committee, to bring forth the policy on the amended preservation, maintenance, and disposition of district real property. Director Moore?
Thank you. So this is coming before the board for a first reading. And the current policy on preservation, maintenance, disposition, and, and disposition of district real property was last revised in 2018. The proposed amendments are intended to respond to some issues that have emerged over the last several years to align the policy more closely with our overarching racial equity and social justice framework and clarify the board's intent. The Policy Committee voted out a number of amendments for consideration by the full board, including the following elements. Acknowledgement of the district's, that, that the district's real property assets are on the traditional land of the Chinook, Clackamas, Kalapulua, Multnomah, Wasco, Kaplumet, Tuolitan, and Malala tribes, acknowledges that Portland institutions and citizens participated in redlining and structurally organized policies, zoning, and planning that restricted or prevented Black Indigenous and communities of color from land ownership and led to their disproportionate displacement through urban renewal or gentrification. Aligns the policy more closely with the district's racial equity and social justice goals strongly affirms that only on rare occasions will the district sell a real property without replacing that property with an equivalent or better property. Provides additional guidance and clarity around the preservation and disposition of district real property and establishes specific evaluation criteria to guide decisions that may deviate from current market terms. Allows staff to efficiently convey real property rights of way or easements that are imposed as a condition of approval of district development and maintenance projects. And allows staff to negotiate contracts without board approval at or below applicable delegation thresholds for district expenditure and revenue contracts if they provide a termination right with 90 days or less notice. So there's, there's lots more of that delicious detail in, in this policy. We welcome public comments on these proposed revisions over the next 21 days.
And as a member of the Policy Committee, I just want to say, I so appreciate the way we're talking about real estate with acknowledging land theft and thinking about, we are beneficiaries of racist practices that happened. And so how do we consider that as we think about our responsibility around land and ownership? And the stewardship we have of the resources we do own? And so I really appreciate the, the huge amount of work that staff did to connect with especially Indigenous communities, to have this be in our policy as the forefront, the beginning of our policy, as we think about land ownership and what that means. And as we think about, in the future, what does it look like for us to make right some of the things that have happened historically? So I just wanted to, especially to Danny, say I so appreciate all the hard work you've done to make this policy really a, a trendsetter, I think, in public policy around land ownership.
I'm gonna, I want to make a comment on that. I also appreciate staff very much. I know a lot of work goes into every bit of development here. And also that, you know, when we talk about what a future looks like, it's also time right now, what we know in 2021, to do something that looks different from the way we've always done it before, to recognize, you know, to go beyond recognizing whose benefit and actually address that. You know, talk about, you know, what we're doing to shift our own behavior and how we're showing up. So the acknowledgement is beautiful, and I'm, I'm, I'm proud that that's in the policy. And yet, I'm wondering, you, you know, it's, it's usually up upon white people that have access to land to make the timeline for when it's going to be redressed in community. And so I'd like us to just rethink this timeline. We have an opportunity tonight and today to do something differently and, and, and for the, in service of a different outcome.
And I know that Doc is working on, on that right now.
I'm speaking, I'm speaking. And so anyway, yes, I want to just say that I just, as, there's a letter that came in tonight, I think that needs to be daylighted. And, and that we, I hope we'll have a robust discussion around how we're showing up in this moment.
I'm sorry, Director DePass. I thought you had stopped speaking. My internet's a little wonky. I, I apologize for interrupting you.
No worries.
Oh, speaking of the letter, do you want to actually, we're not, we don't vote on it. We just have the introduction, right? So, so we just have the introduction. So if we're going to say something, we should say it now, right? There's no motion or anything?
No.
Okay. So I'm just to build off on the comments that Director DePass just shared. I do appreciate the new introduction, and I think that was one of the things that in the seven months that it was in the committee, that there was a realization when we were reading through, through it, that it was, you know, not, not a policy that, as a district that we would, or a board with the equity lens that we have, would want to have adopted the previous language. And so I want to thank Daniela Desma and team for updating that. I think it's really positive. And also, I think the fact that we built in criteria that has an equity lens about when PPS is going to negotiate below-market rates that we look at through an equity lens is a really important change. But the two things that I would like to do is, I have some questions that came up in the committee that I said that I was going to raise when they came, came to the full board. So I'm going to do that in a minute. And I talked to the district's general counsel about just a colloquy to just establish on the record sort of what, what the language means and what it doesn't. And I'll do that in a second. But I was asked to read the letter that we received tonight, which I'm going to, going to do. Because unfortunately, the way that our process works, and I think it's, it's a good question to ask, but when we have a first reading, we don't actually have a public comment period where individuals could comment. And so really, the, the opportunity to comment is you have to get one of the public spots. And they were full tonight, so it didn't work out for, they originally wanted to come and present this, didn't work out for them to do that. And so then the next time, somebody could comment or comment in person to the board would be at the Policy Committee meeting or when we're moving to final adoption, which often is too late. So if you want to address the full board, you may or may not be able to do it, depending on if there's full slots. So I'm going to read the letter that was sent to the, the full board. And as a member of the committee, I take this to heart personally, that we've, I feel like, and I'm delighted to speak for myself, that I fell down in the sense of an important stakeholder we didn't reach out to in the seven months. So the letter is from Kairos PDX, and it says, Dear Portland Public School Board members, after years of talking about how Black kids matter, it feels ironic that we're at this place as an organization committed to Black children, Black excellence, and Black success. We're deeply concerned about the lack of response to our We're deeply concerned about the lack of response to our July 17, 2020 facilities proposal. Asking for your support and partnership with us. We're disheartened that we still have not received a written response to our proposal. We're furthermore wondering whether your commitment to Black children is more in talk than in action. We, Kairos PDX, are part of your PPS community, your PPS family. When we submitted our proposal in July, we were told that a real property policy was being developed to address our needs. It now appears after holding the policy in committee for months, the policy drafted makes it almost impossible for PPS to negotiate the terms anywhere close to what was presented by Kairos PDX. In many ways, it appears this policy was drafted by those with tangential understanding of equity. Aside from bullet plate language, this policy does very little to support the partnership focused on equity that we have worked so hard to foster with PPS, especially our support in passing the recent bond measure in the Center for Black Excellence embedded there. We ask that you review this proposed real estate policy and make edits that exemplify true commitment to equity and equity partners. So, you know, as a Board member, I take this as a, you know, the Board needs to engage our stakeholders. And it's unfortunate that it didn't happen before we had our first reading, but I think we have an opportunity in the next 21 days to do that. And I hope we ask for their very specific comments about the proposal that we're going to, that we may be approving in 21 days. So in addition, I had some questions that I raised at the committee meeting that I'd like to ask. I think since General Counsel is not here this evening, Mary Kane is prepared to answer. And so specifically, the policy has a definition of a long-term lease. And the policy describes a long-term lease of at least five years. And five years is the floor, but it could be higher, is that correct?
That is. The five year is just a, is an industry standard, is my understanding. But the policy doesn't prohibit us from engaging in longer-term leases.
Okay, and a longer-term lease, while it may not be explicitly called out in the policy, it could be negotiated as part of the lease and that would be the standard practice?
Correct.
Great. And then in the same section of the policy, it also acknowledges that leases should also have termination rights. That's a district thing, something that the district should have in its lease. And the right to terminate a lease is pretty standard in most leases, as is a notice period. And so while the policy doesn't spell out a termination or notice period, the expectation is that that would be negotiated as standard practice as part of the lease agreement. And the notice period would be reasonable to both parties, obviously, you don't have an agreement.
That's correct. And the notice would probably match the, would likely match the use, right? So you're looking, what is the best for both parties and that would be embedded in the contract?
Okay, thank you. And then also in the committee, I asked about the current situations in which we might have a current tenant and the current tenant's right of first refusal if we were to, in those rare cases, sell a property. Again, this would be a negotiated lease term as long as it's not in conflict with other terms of the policy, correct?
That's correct.
And so there's nothing in this policy that prevents the district from negotiating a right of first refusal if PPS feels it's to our advantage or benefit?
That is also correct.
Okay. And then the last question I had about the, in the committee is that it relates to the district's objective in real property transactions. And real property transactions, as defined, generally defined in the policy, are both, are terms including leases or sales. And this is Section C of the policy. And I asked in the committee about whether maximum market value is the primary sole driver in transactions for PPS. And there was a longer discussion at the committee about this, about this concept and what are, you know, depending on the property and the circumstances, that what our objectives might be. But what I'm trying to focus on is what the policy, this policy draft actually says. And what was pointed out to me is, an answer to my question, is that in Section C, that it provides that district properties are being managed to carry out a number of objectives. And there are objectives in addition to maximum financial benefit, which is one of the, which is one of the benefits or one of the objectives listed. But the first objective that stated is that they are managed to, quote, "reflect the district's short, intermediate, and long-term educational and operational needs." So looking just for the acknowledgement that the policy draft does have, it does have maximum financial benefit, but it also acknowledges that there are multiple objectives for PPS in real property transactions.
That is correct.
Okay, great. Thank you for the clarifications, because I think it's not necessarily in the policy. And sometimes if we put things in the policy, it may be too prescriptive, but it's not precluded in our lease negotiations.
I would say at a high level, that's the most significant change in this policy, which is, I think, was largely informed by our considerations around our current circumstances with a couple of our partners that we have leases with now. So it does give us that flexibility. It does recognize that we have a, we can give preferential treatment to those that are serving our students in one way or another, whether they're a charter school or whether they have a mission that is focused on our historically underserved students. So I think somewhere in there were some kernels of what, to me, are the truly significant changes in this policy. And I look forward to our rapid adoption and revision here. Dan, I saw you smile, I saw you smile at that because one could say this process has not been very rapid.
I just want to share that I did a presentation today on what spatial justice looks like and the drivers, specifically what the historic drivers of inequitable growth are. And again, say that this is an opportunity for us to look at what part of our prioritizing, and it's real estate, so it's always the highest value and, you know, speculation and, it's a speculative market, right? So land as part of a speculative economy concentrating white well. You know, I guess what I'm saying is we need to balance the public interest with doing the right thing, knowing what we know now. And so the list goes on to say, a lack of public and private investment in Black and Brown neighborhoods, a tax system and subsidies investing in white homeowners disproportionately, a biased private finance system, zoning that sequesters wealth and whiteness. And how we show up in this real estate transaction, I think it'll be really important to balance the public good with doing the right thing, what we know about land speculation, know about who benefits from this. And really, you know, I'm even, I'm willing to volunteer to take a hard look at this policy as well and contribute where I can.
So Director Moore, with this being our first reading, assuming no bumps in the road, when would this come to the Board for adoption?
I was, I did not look at the calendar. Roseanne, do you, can you figure out quickly what 21 days out is?
It would be at the March 9th Board meeting.
Andrew, I know you've been trying to add something in.
It's okay.
That, is that, that's 28 days.
Is it not?
It is, but the-
That's our first Board meeting after 21 days.
After 21 days, okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I was trying to do the math.
And 21 days is mandated. So we can't really do anything about that timeframe.
Is there, between now and the 21 days, I mean, instead of, we can, we're announcing it now that there's a 21-day comment period, can we go one step further and actually do some targeted outreach? Or rather than just, it's on the website, can we do something a little bit more intentional?
Dani or Jonathan, would you like to answer that question and maybe talk about what outreach has already been done and what other plans you might have? And then Andrew will get to your question.
So we, so as you know, we did some outreach at the outset to partners around who we thought might have an interest in this and primarily through the Coalition of Communities of Color. And so I think there's an opportunity, we had a, we had a pretty thorough conversation with folks there who wanted to have some time to go back to their members and sort of think about how to engage with this policy and with others. So I think that's the, has been the primary outreach that I've been doing, is primarily through these organizations.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I just, I actually, I want to take a slightly larger, so I need to, I'm going to admit that I'm catching up a little bit, so I'm not part of the Policy Committee. And I did not see this letter, which came in just a little before 5 o'clock tonight, until people mentioned it. So thank you, Director dePass, for reading it. But I think I am confused and I think it's good to surface this, though, since this is a first reading before we go much further. My read of this policy, and you know, as I went through it before and am reading through it again now, it is, it is very strong in terms of saying we should be getting market rate for our leases. But it does have language that allows for exceptions to that and exceptions based on, you know, schools that serve, you know, predominantly underserved students that have a connection, et cetera, et cetera. And so I'm actually, I'm a little confused and I can follow up with Kairos, but if anybody's had, I'm a little confused by the letter because they're obviously frustrated by this policy. But I'm trying to get a better sense. And then I'm hearing people talk, but I'm actually hearing people say, are we proposing to revise this policy? And now after this first reading? Or, because it also sounded like we just talked about moving forward with adoption in four weeks. So I apologize, but I have lost the thread in terms of the conversation and where we're headed with it.
Director Moore, can you speak about the policy adoption process?
Well, we, I mean, all policies after a first reading are open for comments for 21 days. And generally, when there's a Policy Committee meeting that occurs within that 21-day period or after, we consider any comments that we have received. So it is, it's within the purview of the committee and the Board to make additional revisions. I would only say that the committee spent quite a long time working through this policy language, trying to balance a number of competing interests. And in particular, trying to be responsive to the requests from several of our partners around changing, changing the terms of leases in particular. And I think we have built in enough language that provides the flexibility that would be necessary in order for the district to respond to those requests. So, I mean, we're, we're open to considering, considering the policy longer. But, I mean, there's also a, we also have to balance the question of, you know, a sense of urgency with continued consideration of additional amendments. So, I'm not, did that answer the question?
One of the reasons we took up this policy in the timeline we did is because we had partner agencies ask us to make some decisions about leases. And kind of the idea was we needed to have a policy to make sure we were making sort of decisions clearly, so they were transparent. And I know that, you know, Kairos was on my heart and mind as we discussed these and that we really did try to build in, you know, provisions for, if the school is serving mostly students, if the school is serving underserved students, you know, where is there a place for us to negotiate? And I, I too, like Andrew, am not seeing the disconnect there that Kairos has surfaced in their letter. So I think that that's then, you know, inherent on us to connect and figure out where that disconnect is between what we intended, which was to make space for those negotiations, and the sense that they got in reading the policy is that there is no space for the negotiations.
So is there a Policy Committee meeting then between now and our Board meeting 28 days from now? There is. So you'll be considering comment. Well, what I guess I would ask, what I will be interested in seeing when this comes back for final adoption is that we got specifics and from Kairos, but other stakeholders and partners as well, right? That we specifically reached out to get, because the letter is general, so I'd be curious about specifics that they're seeing in the policy and concerns. And then I'll be interested just from a recommendation from the Policy Committee about whether those concerns were valid and deserve some changes or whether we feel like we had already incorporated the necessary flexibility in language and can move forward, so.
So Director Scott, some of the issues that had been raised are, were part of the colloquy that I had with Mary Kane around some clarification while something wasn't in the policy, that like, what is the intent? Or is it not allowed in the lease? Because frankly, that's an overarching policy and then there's some things that actually are not disallowed. You can negotiate in a lease and that was important to be able to establish that, that it wasn't the intent to like, you can't have this, but it's just not in the policy. But it's as part of a regular lease negotiation. So those are some of the issues. I would say that our policy on policy says it's at least 21 days. It doesn't say it has to be, like, not more than 21 days. So we're obviously well within it. To me, when I, you know, read the letter and see the last sort of part of it, that, you know, I feel like we have an obligation to go ask, you know, really specific, what is it that we missed? And, you know, we, I don't think there's any bad intent in the committee, but we clearly must have missed something because they read the policy, they hadn't had an ask into us. And there is a disconnect. And I think if we just move ahead with a, yeah, we got it right, we think we addressed their concerns, I think this letter clearly says they don't think we did. So we should figure that out. And I think the point of asking other community-based partners, because just my history with the district on our facilities is, you know, we have all kinds of partners, we have a very specific one here, but, you know, we have Head Start programs that aren't PPS Head Start programs that might want to be in our buildings and, or lease. So I do think there are some pretty strategic outreach that we could do in the next two weeks of, you know, here's what we're trying to accomplish, here's the language we muck with. And, you know, have we accomplished it or where's the gap? And I don't think that's going to take, shouldn't take that long to be able to address that.
I'd like us to encourage definitely the targeted outreach and consider engaging with the tribes. We should absolutely have someone representing the tribes on our committees whenever we're talking about land and real estate. Just as a best practice, as a state-of-the-art, you know, we want to be, we want to be that institution that's doing things right. And yeah, I think the letter is pretty general, but I think it bears repeating that we should absolutely have engaged with them. And there's other partners, I know Impact Northwest, I think, is another one that's housed in one of our buildings that had questions this spring. And perhaps the preschools, the preschool, universal preschool might also want to, you know, look at using property that we're not currently occupying. So, so anyway, thank you again for staff for considering additional targeted outreach. And let's make this right.
I have one other question unrelated to this topic, but I don't want to move on if other people are.
Go ahead, Andrew.
So there's another part of this policy and it actually was there before. And so I just, I'm curious about the people in the committee, whether this came up at all in your conversations, that's sort of only on rare occasions will the district sell a property without replacing that property with an equivalent or better property. And does the rare occasion, I mean, does that sort of allow flexibility to still do that? The reason why I raise this, and I don't know what the district's overall land holdings are. I know what we're talking about is a school. That's what people think about, right? A school or school property. But I know governments often own lots of little random pieces and parcels. I don't know if the school district has a lot of those. I know other governments tend to. So I wanted to make sure we weren't being overly prescriptive, that there are some times you absolutely want to sell a piece of property and not have to replace it. So I just, I didn't know if that had come up in your Policy Committee at all, talking about this.
I, it did not, primarily because I believe we disposed of the last, I could be wrong here, but I think a couple of years ago, we disposed of the last sort of random lot of land that we had. So I don't think- So I, I don't think, um. I think what we have left, um, and just to, just to remind people, um. In the last 30 years, um, PPS has disposed of quite a lot of property. And, um. And I think we have, uh, come to regret some of those dispositions. But I think at this point, um, what we have left are sort of viable school properties. And the language was intended to permit. You know, a, a long-term lease or sale of a property. But only after really serious consideration of the, uh, you know, of the. Long-term implications for, for such a disposition, um. I think we tried to be very careful about the. Leaving enough room, enough flexibility so that the district would be able to, um. To be good stewards of public property, um. We may, we may want to look at some of the language again, um. I, I will say that. You know, our legal team and the, the real estate team within the district, um. Have, have spent many hours poring over this language, um, and they've been. When necessary, they pushed back on, um, language that they thought was too restrictive, um. And this is. You know, the, over the course of many months, this is the, the language that we landed on after a, a great deal of discussion. So we can, the committee can take another look at it. Um, I have not. I have not read the letter, um, I didn't see it before the meeting started. I was in a, another meeting before this meeting. So I don't know what the specifics are, but, um, we can certainly. Take another look at the policy, uh, considering the, the comments that we've gotten and any other comments that we will receive in the next few weeks.
And, and if I, and Director Moore, if you could, you know, um, make sure we reach out to Kairos and get some more specifics about what they're seeing. In the policy that, um, they feel is a barrier to, to good faith negotiations with the district, so we can have that be part of our, our clear considerations.
Yeah.
I, I think the answer to your question is like, yes, we could. It's just, it's not going to be the general practice. Because I think Director, Director Moore is correct. There, there were a, a lot of miscellaneous parcels that. Didn't have schools on them. I mean, that just were random. Like things that have been donated to the district or, you know, we were never going to use for schools and those mostly are gone. But the answer to your question is, yes, we, we could, but it's probably going to be rare.
That's helpful and, and that, that's kind of the way I read it. I just, I wanted to hear from the committee a little bit of that. I mean, I, I can imagine a situation where. You know, we want to, 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 to sell a, a strip of, of land on the side of one of our, you know, fields to Portland Parks and Recreation for some reason. And I, I want to make sure that that would be allowed under a policy like this versus having to go buy another strip of land somewhere else in the district to, you know, to, to, to make up for that, so. But it feels like there, the language is sufficient there. So thanks, thanks for that.
I, I think that also the letter, you know, while it's not super pointed about the policy specifically, um, is just. I, I sense this frustration of writing a letter and not getting an answer back. And so. You know, understand workflow is really crazy right now, but I, I, you know, when you write. An institution, you, you want to get a response back, um, right away.
Yeah, and I, I think we have a bigger, um, conversation that we need to have about how we do outreach around our policies. I mean, with our 21-day comment period, especially, I know we've talked about this multiple times at policy committee and with our outreach folks really thinking thoughtfully about. How do we not just say the policy's out there, but really? Try to invite people in to give comment and, and we still haven't, you know, I know that the staff has tried lots of different things, but we haven't. Been able to thread that needle perfectly yet, and that's something we still need to continue to, to think about. And. It's come up multiple times in the policy committee. This is not the first time where. Something's come forward and then we're like, oh, we missed this voice. And so, um, that's something that we just, we continue to need to bring forward a policy. Of how do we, there's always this, like, do you, do you write the policy, send it out there and get feedback? Or do you get all the feedback and then write the policy? And we're trying to do both. And I think in, in doing that, we sometimes miss some things. So I know that our staff has worked huge hours on this and done a lot of investment and yet we still obviously need to do a little more or a lot more. So we'll, we'll work with, I'll have Director Moore work with folks to help make that happen. Anything else on this, the real estate policy before we move forward to our next work?
I'm just going to submit the colloquy questions, um, for the record and also, um, was asked to submit that, um. Letter for the, for the record as well. So I'll get that to Ms. Bradshaw.
Thank you, Julia. All right, Director Moore, would you like to introduce our next item, which is the second reading of the. Sure, I'm on the right thing. The, the second reading of the anti-racist and anti-oppression learning community policy.
Um, in September 2020, the Argon Board of Education enacted the All Students Belong Rule. Which recognizes that student health and safety are the cornerstone of education. And that all students are entitled to a high-quality educational experience, free from discrimination or harassment. Based on perceived race, color, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, disability or natural origin. And without fear of hatred, racism or violence. The All Students Belong Rule prohibits hate symbols, specifically three of the most recognizable symbols of hate in the United States. The swastika outside of a religious context, the Confederate flag and the noose. This rule was a springboard in the development of this anti-racism, anti-oppression. Learning communities policy, which was informed by input from students and staff and articulates the district's commitment to providing a safe and healthy educational experience. For all of its students and staff. This proposal, this proposed policy has been open for public comment for more than 21 days. And to my knowledge, no comments were received. So it's now before the full board for, um, for adoption.
Do we still have?
Yeah, Larry.
Do you want a motion?
So move.
Yes, please.
Second.
Great. I didn't catch any of that. So it sounded like Director Bailey moved and Director Brim Edwards seconded the adoption of Resolution 6239. Is there any board discussion?
Is, um. I can ask for, to deflect this, um, to deflect, he can send this to somebody else, um. There is, as part of this, um. The discussion in the staff memo about this, it talks about alignment with the student conduct and discipline policy. And that is still outstanding and hasn't been adopted. And I was wondering if we have an update of. When that's going to be, what the timeline for that is, like. Which, which, which student conduct and discipline policy, the current, the current one or the one that we did really extensive work on?
It will be part of the new, um, student conduct policy and I, and. That is still on hold pending, um, kind of the completion of discussion with, uh, PAT. And, um, I think with the other, uh, with. All of the other COVID responses and the return to, um, hybrid and Lippi, it's, it's taken a bit of a backseat.
I'm sorry, did you say we're, we're, we're acting as if the new one's in place or?
It's not, it's not in place yet. It's on hold. The policy that, uh, it, it's referencing the new policy.
But what's in, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not.
What we have in place now, the current, the.
The current. Our current policy is in place until we get the other one approved, right?
Correct.
And this, the new one or the current one? The, the current one and then it will automatically join with the other one when it's.
It'll move into the new one. Yes, yes.
I think the reference in the policy also, uh, spoke to a lot of the work that's being done at the administrative directive level. Where sort of we're aligning, uh, the, making sure that restorative justice practices are aligned, uh, in both and that. And that, that was where the bulk of the staff work, um, being done was, was being discussed.
So I just have a short comment about the, the policy, um. Um, I think it's a necessary policy for us to have and really important, um, to set expectations. Especially given, uh, some of the incidents we've had at our schools over the last, um. In our community, uh, in recent years, um, but I most, um. One of the sentences that I really think is important, but I think it's really important to have as part of this policy is the district will incorporate learning opportunities to support the goals of the policy in here. Because I do think we could pass a policy and it won't, um. Make a huge difference in, in, in the district. It creates a framework, but I think what really is going to change things is changing people's hearts and minds and, um, the education piece of it. So whatever it is that the district has, um, materials or curriculum or the way in which they're going to roll out, uh, learning opportunities. It would be great to better understand that. What, what that is. And I know that's not part of what the board does, but I would just be interested in that as, um, sort of the, the next step in the outreach, um, that's going to happen from, from the policy.
The live stream just stopped? Terry, are we still live?
Just let me know that he's working on it. I just saw that message.
Okay, so we're going to just take a little pause. Okay, thanks, Terry. Okay. Is there anything we need to recap from the last three or four minutes?
And I don't know if this makes a difference or not, but I am recording it, so there is, it is on record of it.
Apologize for those of you who we blanked out a little bit, but Terry, as always, saved the day and got us back sorted and live. Is there any public comment, Ms. Bradshaw, on this policy?
No, there's not.
Okay. Any, um, other board discussion on the policy?
Um, this is the only policy I know of that actually has a paragraph in bold. Maybe, maybe there's some others.
That's a mistake, apparently. It's a mistake. I asked about it.
Ah, well, I think it should be in bold because it really emphasizes the, the heart of the policy, um, in terms of. Addressing hate speech and hate actions. So. To me, it was symbolic of how important this is for our students and our community. Leave it in.
Anything else? All right, the board will now vote on Resolution 6239, Resolution to Approve the Anti-Racist and Anti-Oppression Learning Communities Policy. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6239 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Shu voting.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Director Moore, back to you once again for the second reading of the amended professional conduct between adults and students policy.
Uh, so did I mention that the policy committee has been busy? Um. The professional conduct policy was approved by the board in October 2019 after extensive community engagements. Once implemented, staff brought forward a few areas of tension between policy and practice and asked for amendments to the policy. The amendment to language about contractor training was proposed to more accurately target training to adults who have direct unsupervised contact with students. And not to require it of contractors with little, little or no contract, contact with students, for example. Contractors doing work with our finance departments or external auditors. The policy also defined expectations about staff to student, student text communication. With the introduction of comprehensive distance learning in response to the coronavirus pandemic. The district incorporated new communication platforms to allow additional methods of access to communicate with students. Including a platform, for instance, that allows district oversight of text communication between students and staff. The proposed amendments reflect that such technology that can be tracked by the district is permissible. And this is before the full board for adoption tonight with the, uh, you, uh, unanimous recommendation of the committee.
All right, um, we need to make a motion. So who would like to, um. Bring this forward for us? Do I have a motion and second to adopt Resolution to Approve the Amendments to the Professional Conduct Between Adults and Students Policy?
Moved. I moved. All second that we, uh, move the professional conduct policy as amended.
Thank you. So Director Brim Edwards moves and Director Constance seconds the adoption of Resolution 6240. Is there any board discussion? All right, Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
All right, the board will now vote on Resolution 6240, Resolution to Approve the Amendment to the Professional Conduct. Between Adults and Students Policy 5.10.064-P. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? All right, uh, the resolution is passed by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Shu voting.
Yes.
All right. Is there any other business at this time before we adjourn our meeting? All right, um, the next regular meeting of the board will be held in two weeks, which is February. Twenty-third, is that correct? I don't have it in my calendar and it's not on my script. So the next meeting, the board will be, yes, okay, February 23rd. Uh, this meeting is adjourned and I hope you all stay well out there. Thank you.